Good evening. I'm calling this meeting to order. The time is 5:30 PM and in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, this meeting is officially open. Let me announce that any disruption, per BED local policy, any disruption after a warning, you will be removed from our meeting. So please be respectful of the board meeting that we have to conduct tonight. We will begin, uh, we'll call the meeting ordered at 5:30 in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. This meeting is officially open with a quorum present. We will now move to our pledges, where we'll be led by Mr. Clint Bond.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. I will now turn it over to Mr. Bond for our recognitions.
Thank you, President Ramos and members of the board. My Brothers Keeper is an initiative that had, was launched by President Barack Obama to address persistent opportunity gaps faced by boys and young men of color. Four years ago, Fort Worth ISD partnered with strategies to elevate people under the leadership of Mr. Ricky Clark and launched our MBK program in 15 high schools. Since that time, the program has expanded to 17 high schools, 13 middle schools, and now includes four chapters of My Brothers Keeper. Participating students have the opportunity to discuss African and Latino history and the many contributions people of color have made to this country. They also engage in community service while preparing for college or their chosen path after high school. Please join us in recognizing the following students. Akin White, if you're here, would you please stand? Akin graduated from Young Men's Leadership Academy and while he will be attending Norfolk Next is Dylan Thomas. Mr. Thomas, would you stand, please? Dylan graduated from Pascal High School and he has received scholarships in the amount Mr. Thomas will be attending Texas Christian University on a full ride scholarship. Tonight, we also recognize Zephany Bowie. Are you here, please, if you would stand? Zephany Bowie? Okay. Ms. Bowie will be enlisting in the United States Army. Michaela Cook graduated from Dunbar High School and is not able to be here this evening because she is working, but she will be attending Texas... She will be attending Texas Christian University on a full ride scholarship. And at this time, we'd like to ask all of the My Brothers Keepers and My Sisters Keepers, graduating seniors, to please stand so we may recognize them. And now for a, for the next few moments, we have a video recognizing the MBK and MSK programs.
That's what MBK brings. It brings discipline. They're not used to seeing us disciplined, so if they see us disciplined, they don't recognize us. We're different. We're different from the rest.
Bring someone else into MSK slash MBK, I would say if you want a support group.
People aren't used to seeing black and brown men disciplined. That's what MBK brings. It brings discipline. They're not used to seeing us disciplined, so if they see us disciplined, they don't recognize us. We're different. We're different from the rest.
Bring someone else into MSK slash MBK, I would say if you want a support group, um, an organization that will support you and, you know, have your vacuum needed without pressuring you, MBK and MSK.
They talk to me about my self, my ethnicity, my culture, my race.
It just feels like a brotherhood, like genuine brotherhood, like so much more than just a, just a group here in school or something.
It really opened up my eyes. I never think of a program like this. I never think of an actual program about cultures and stuff, you know, different things that you learn.
MBK showed me a whole lot, man. I don't even know where to start. Real male role models, what it was about, man, carry yourself and just being proud to be black.
They just taught me what it is, what a man is.
A man is who acts, takes responsibility. Takes care of everyone. Brings everyone in their community together.
I've seen stuff about MBK that it learned, I learned to love my Blackness and embrace my pride.
Black for the people, red for the blood, green for the Latin.
Don't be my lucky black.
White for the purity, red for the blood, green for the Latin.
I think MBK showed me what it means to follow the word of your word, be a man of pride.
Uh, MBK has helped me because I come from Zimbabwe, I was born in Zimbabwe, I was a refugee from Congo, and MBK has helped me to be proud of where I come from.
I love MBK and I love My Brothers Keeper.
MBK is one reason why I'm thinking of becoming a community scholar at TCCU.
Probably because I'm in MSK because I'm getting closer to my sisters now and I know that...
And MSK is like a place where you can come to and it's, it's more, it's more free for you to be you.
It was so much knowledge and so much positivity and there were so many people that I would never been friends with, like kind of not doing that wrong. And especially this year with COVID and everything, and I had a lot of problems, you know, like I struggled with segregation a lot, and you know, being at MBK and having my sisters go back to it, I don't know where you went for you.
Like, there you go, I feel awesome.
And my friend, he's a master, you know, Ricky and Robert and everything, you know, it was a big help and I was able to deep myself further, I hope, and quit and just...
MBK for life.
For repeat after me, if every member of this group is just like me, what kind of group would this group be? Hold there, give yourself a round of applause, yeah.
Asking you this evening to consider naming the Western Hills High School Black Box Theater as the Julia Worthington Black Box Theater. Julia Worthington has been the Theater Arts Director at Western Hills for the past 42 years. This high school grad developed, uh, I'm sorry, this Pascal grad developed a single multi-level theater class at Western Hills into packed classes of honors theater, honors technical theater, theater production, and international baccalaureate theater. She showcased her students' exemplary work by chartering the International Thespian Society Troop 2160 back in 1984. With other Fort Worth ISD teachers, she created Teachers on the Boards for summer shows at Jubilee Theater to generate scholarship, uh, scholarships for college for high school seniors. She was co-director-producer for H2O, the Hill Heights Operation Summer Musical Workshop, open to all Fort Worth ISD high school students, and that lasted for 13 years. In addition to many other awards and accolades, Ms. Worthington received the Casamagiana Betty Buckley Award for Outstanding Community Theater Work. She was Western Hills Teacher of the Year in 2006, and in 2018, she was named Bass Hall Chair for Teaching Excellence in Performing Arts, Theater, and Dance. Ms. Worthington is here this evening, I believe, and we'll ask her to stand to be recognized.
I just have a couple of things to say. As a drama teacher, you know you weren't going to get away with me not saying anything. Um, it has been a wonderful 42 years with Fort Worth ISD, and before that, I'm a product of this whole Fort Worth ISD system. And, um, it's such an honor to have this place where I spent so much of my time named after me. Um, and I have my faculty, my principal, Ms. Carrie Flores, my administration staff, and, um, all the teachers at Western Hills High School to thank for this, as well as the Benbrook community. They were extremely supportive of everything we did at Western Hills. I think theater was always a plus because, one, we didn't really have very many discipline problems because I kept the kids too busy, and two, we never asked for money because we made it all by ticket sales. And so that was the best. And, um, so I'm pleased this evening with all that's gone on, we could all talk about it, but my last three major seniors are here, and, um, I'm very proud of them. All of them are going on to, um, college, not in theater, but I promise you, they're theatrical, they will be fine. And, uh, so, uh, also replacing me is a suited teacher that I had, that I thought would be in a wonderful position to carry on the tradition at Western Hills. It's a great honor. We had so many theatrics in that space. I promise you, I will miss the drama. Uh, or not, for real, because every day was a joy to be in there with all the different levels and all that we produced and all that we did. COVID and the pandemic kind of shook things up with everything, but I think we're set to be back on track next year. This is a huge honor, and I, for one, am going to be present when we have our first show in the newly-named Julia Worthington Black Box Theater. Thank you so much, Ms. Flores and all the staff at Western Hills.
Members of the board, our last recognition this evening is that Fort Worth ISD is one of only eight school districts nationwide to receive a new federal grant to develop and implement programs to prevent human trafficking victimization. The three-year program, the three-year program provides up to $600,000 annually for the district's objectives of increasing teachers' understandings of the complexities of human trafficking, increasing students' understanding of protective factors, and training qualified student-support services staff district-wide. Elementary students will learn foundational concepts and will be equipped with tools to develop personal boundaries to keep them physically and emotionally safe, both online and in person. Middle school students will learn about the different forms of child abuse and trafficking, and the importance of trusting their gut on how to be empowered to report when their boundaries are crossed. And high school students will learn about warning signs, recruitment through social media and video games, signs of grooming, legal consequences, and how media can influence and desensitize people toward exploitation. The project kicks off this summer with a citywide prevention campaign called "Don't Get Tricked," and you're seeing those pictures on the board, which will alert individuals on how they might be approached by human traffickers online and via cellphone for the purpose of sex or labor trafficking. Working on this very important project out of the Counseling Services Department, where Kathleen Hicks is the director, will be Tricia Tamayo and Angelia AJ Hicks, and if they would stand, we can, uh, recognize them. Thank you, Mr. Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Bond, and congratulations, Ms. Worthington, again, for that, um, presentation and also our young people, My Brothers Keeper, My Sisters Keeper. Congratulations to you, well done, my friends. We will be moving on to public comment. Let me remind you that because of restrictions by the Texas Open Meetings Act, board members may not engage in a verbal exchange about a subject that has not been posted. We will listen and take notes, but the board is prohibited from responding to any inquiries made during a board meeting on any topic not posted on the agenda. However, the board may reply with, one, a statement of specific factual information given in response to the inquiry, two, recitation of existing policy in response to the inquiry, or three, direct a person to visit with staff about the issue. While the board listens to concerns of a general nature, speakers should refrain from mentioning names of individual employees or public officers during their comments. Any employee, parent, or other member of the public is asked to comply with the appropriate grievance policy to have a complaint heard pursuant to the applicable board policy. No presentation may exceed one minute, per policy BED local, to allow everyone the opportunity to speak, unless the speaker has prior approval for additional time. Because of the use of a translator, speakers who require the assistance of a translator are permitted double the allotted time of speakers who do not require the assistance of a translator. Furthermore, a speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another speaker. For those who are speaking tonight, sanitation wipes are available at each podium. I ask that you please observe these rules for the purpose of effectively accomplishing the business of the meeting in a timely manner, and I'll also note, um, be mindful, my friends, that young people are watching us tonight, so ask that you, um, be respectful, especially as we've got plenty of young scholars in our room, that we conduct ourselves as the amazing human beings that I know that we can be. Our first speaker for tonight is going to be the Self-Determination Group. And right before you get going, uh, the Self-Determination Group will be followed by Charles Gordon, and Charles Gordon can get to one of the podiums, and then we'll do that so that we have two people ready to go, so we can best use our time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll ask that you please conduct yourself properly. That's a warning. If I have to give another one, I'll ask you to be removed from the boardroom. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Board President and members of the board, thank you for allowing me time to address you. My name is Kaylee Hammerick, and my brother is a participant of the Self-Determination Group, a self-advocacy group for people with disabilities. Given the limited time, I will be speaking on their behalf. I will be brief. I have to remove this because I can't breathe. The Fort Worth Star Telegram article, "Fort Worth Student With Autism Died After Being Restrained At School." What happened is what brought us here tonight. Members are concerned about the safety and well-being of students with disabilities enrolled in Fort Worth ISD. We know that separate segregated classes, programs, and schools foster chronic and unreported abuse. Students should not be harmed, much less die, because they are restrained. Further, the incident should not be covered up. Given information reported in the article by the Fort Worth Star Telegram, we request Fort Worth ISD hire a third-party entity with experience in working with school districts be brought in to perform an...
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what?
It's time, yes. Next, we have Charles Gordon. Charles will be followed by Emmanuel Jackson.
I have...
You can pass to a staff member.
Hello, how, hello, how y'all doing? My name is Charles Gordon. I attend Eastern Hills High School. I am a senior that just graduated. I will be attending, attending TCC for getting my real estate degree in architectural engineering. Um, I am brought here today to speak on behalf of MBK, My Brothers Keeper. My Brothers Keeper has showed me how to carry myself as a young man. They have shown me how to learn about my race, my ethnicity. They have shown me how to learn about my true colors. Without MBK, I would not be who I am today. I would not have gained scholarships, earnings, over half a million dollars. I stand for racial equity. I stand, I stand against not being able to speak on racial equity into schools. We need more independence and more equity inside of our school districts.
Thank you, Charles. Next, we have Emmanuel Jackson. Emmanuel will be followed by Kimia Caballos. Is Emmanuel here? Okay. So, Kimia Caballos, and then Kimia will be followed by Hayden Underwood.
My name is Kimia Cibios. I wanted to talk behalf of my Sisters Keepers and my Brothers Keepers. This group focuses on racial equality and taught me how to be mean and be comfortable for who I am as a person in my area and community. I didn't feel comfortable at any of the schools, even made fun of because of my skin, my eyes, and the way I talk. For you guys who don't, who don't know me, I'm part Hispanic, Persian, Russian, and Japanese, so I really struggled to find a part of me and who I was. If it wasn't for this opportunity of racial equality and for ISD, I wouldn't know who I am. So I know someone out there is struggling themselves. I was scared and struggled alone until I had this group of support to help me for who I am, and I'm sure that goes out for anyone who was in my position. Racial equality isn't, is going to continue to fight for itself if it doesn't stop here. And shout out to My Brothers Keepers for helping me, so thank you.
Next, we have Hayden. Hayden's not here. Next, we have Anthony Guerra, and Anthony will be followed by Onesimo Torres.
Hello, my name is Anthony Guerra. I'm here speaking on behalf of My Brothers Keeper, and I would like to introduce the program where we can learn about our own culture in every school district. I don't care that we have to learn about one culture. It's not history. I want to learn my story. I want to learn my story because after joining My Brothers Keeper, I know who I am and I know who I'm going to be. There's no way that's going to stop me. I'm always going to be the one who's going to help and understand about my own culture. Even, even if everyone tells me I can't, I'm going to find a way to spread and show that there's another way. There's al, always going to be another way to show and find out who you really are, no matter what. And if I have to raise money, do whatever I have to do to do it, then I will. Without the school support, I don't care. I'm going to find a way to do it, no matter what.
Onesimo Torres. Onesimo will be followed by Akin White. Akin, if you'll just, Onesimo, and then Akin will, will be right behind you. He'll be ready to go right when he's done. And after Akin will be Isaac Tate.
My name is Onesimo Torres. I am 21 years old. I'm a graduate of Pascal High School, class of 2018. I was a member of My Brothers Keeper, and now I'm a facilitator for the middle schools. Frankly, I am here today to find out what you guys are trying to do to these kids. The way I see it, you are preparing them for a world that does not exist, but it can exist. By having honest and respectful conversations with each other, we can be, we can move past the hundreds of years of manipulation and distrust our people have for each other. It is past the time our city has these conversations for the sake of our children's futures. I stand here today as a Mexican man raised in Fort Worth to open up future negotiations so that our city can have a history I am proud of to share with my children and my grandchildren. Organizations like My Brothers Keeper are forward-thinking and will get us to a world we all want to live in. I want to share a history that shows how this city can be an example and revolutionize a system that was designed to educate, but has turned a blind eye to my family.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. White. Mr. White will be followed by Isaac Tate. Isaac Tate will be followed by Robert Bucker. Bucker, sorry.
Good evening. My name is Akin White, and I'm a graduate of YMLA with four point, with a 4.1 GPA and over $1.1 million scholarships. But more importantly, today I am speaking as a product of the My Brothers Keeper program. MBK has taught my brothers and sisters about our culture and our history, things that McGrath Hill history textbooks would never teach us. Not teaching our history is erasing it. MBK gave us examples of positive male role models that look like us. Words can't express how much these types of experiences can change the trajectory of a young black or brown boy. My MBK family and I stand for truth, humanity, and unity.
Now, Mr. Tate will be followed by Robert Bucker. Please, please refrain from disrupting the board meeting. I will add, that's your final warning. Unless, officer, please. Thanks, sir.
All right, my name is Isaac Tate. Here I was thinking it was a ploy to barely scratch the surface on African history anyway, since the school systems now don't talk about it much unless it falls within the bounds of 28 days. Now, we are here today discussing, should we or should we not keep critical race theory in discussion of the still-alive white supremacy in schools? I'm not the least bit surprised. I mean, who would want to learn that the founding father, George Washington, was so racist? His dentures were grafted from the teeth of enslaved Africans, so that even, so that even, so that even when he would chew his food, a black man would have to do it for him? Who would want to learn that the first mathematician was black? Who would want to learn that the first astrologist, black? First literary device, language written composition or composition started by someone who was black? First engineers... by someone who was black? First engineers and architects, black. First men and women of war, black. First rulers, black. First civilization, black. If I were you, I wouldn't want to hear it either, because you're looking at someone who used the knowledge, applied it, and refuses to shut down. The real fear is creating someone like me, so you suppress me. But please understand, when you suppress chosen people, you will find a way to the vantage.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Robert Bucker. Robert will be followed by Sabina Robert, and then will be followed by Sabina Spinelli.
So, critical race theory only has divisiveness point-blank, and me as a Hispanic, I have Honduran in me, so let's check credentials on that. Believes racism is present in every aspect of life, every relationship and every interaction, therefore has every advocates looking for it everywhere. Relies upon interest convergence. White people only give black people opportunities and freedoms when it's their own interest, when they have just as much as we do, if not equal. Trust me, I've worked a bunch, a bunch of few people that's made over 165,000, had no quarrels about it, thought it was pretty awesome. It's against free societies and wants to dismantle them, replace them with something that advocates control. Only treats races as socially constructed groups. There are no individuals in critical race theory. Believes science, reason, evidence are white way of knowing, and that storytelling, lived experience are a black alternative which hurts everyone, especially black people. Rejects all potential alternatives like colorblindness as a form of racism, making itself the only allowable game in town, which is totalitarianism. Acts like anyone who disagrees with it must do so for the racist and white supremacist reason, even if those people are black, which is also totalitarian.
Thank you. Next, we have Sabina. Sabina will be followed by Amy Curry. Amy Curry will be next.
I'm proud to say my family was part of the Juneteenth Walk with Ms. Olbely, celebrating America standing together. On the other hand, you're further dividing our country by allowing CRT into our school's curriculum. You are condoning the same narrative of the racial divide which came from those who kept slavery alive. You are abolishing President Abraham Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation known to free all people of color and guarantee the aliable rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. You are killing the great dream of Martin Luther King, of the children living in the nation where they will not be judged by the color of their skin but by the content of their character. You are playing into the feelings of our youth, weaponizing identity politics and deceiving many children in your care. This is child endangerment. Parents like, just like myself, want our children to be educated, not indoctrinated, with your racist ideologies. You are instilling hate into our children for America and each other, further lowering their self-esteem. They already face enough, especially being in low academic performance schools just like yourself.
Thank you. Next, we have Amy Curry. Amy will be followed by Kristi Beck. Please, we have speakers. Please, please be respectful. Thank you.
My boys have been taught since they were small that racism is evil and will not be tolerated. To tell my young sons that they are what their mother has always called evil is child abuse. Teaching thousands of black children in this city that they're nothing but oppressed victims, and that's all they will ever be, is evil. Somewhere in this city, it's a young black girl we'd all look at and say she is smart, ambitious, strong, and she is going somewhere. That girl is following a long history of successful black women in this country. She's Candace Owens, Carol Swain, Maya Angelou, Shonda Rhimes. She's Oprah Winfrey, Condoleezza Rice. She's Serena Williams. She's Michelle Obama. Shall I go on? Some of the greatest words ever uttered were those of a brilliant man who had a dream that one day his children would be judged not by the color of their skin but by the content of their character. We should talk about our history. It's not altogether pretty. But teaching children to view everything based on skin color destroys Dr. Martin Luther King's dream. CRT sets us back over 58 years. See these parents around me? We will not allow you to abuse our children, and we're not going away.
Next, we have Kristi Beck. Kristi Beck. Kristi will be followed by Missy Kara.
I'm calling on the Fort Worth ISD Board of Trustees to select board officers who are committed to the equality of all students and not focus on critical race theory, racial equity, or any other related woke solutions. Leadership ISD, an organization that the current board president is a part of, is here pushing the message to continue the racial equity work in the district. Why would they push this message when the past four to five years have shown this focus to be ineffective? I'm here today to urge the board members to elect officers who are committed to the equality of all students across the board, whether black, Hispanic, white, or any other skin color. We need officers who don't bring critical race theory and racial equity work to the table as solutions. We need officers who bring parents, teachers, administrators, and community resources to the table.
Next, we have Missy. Missy will be followed by Carlos Turcios.
My name is Missy Kara. School Board, the new officer election tonight is critical because your performance data shows so many deficiencies. And despite the millions you've spent on CRT, 6,000 students unrolled this year alone. Multiple employees have resigned, and this all occurred while Fort Worth rose to become the 12th largest city in the nation. I've spoken to many of them, and CRT is the primary reason they left. Numbers don't lie. People don't flee from the truth. They pursue the truth. Once they find it, they fight to protect it with all their heart and with whatever it takes, and we ask that you reevaluate the results that CRT has produced. They are not good. Please elect leaders who put their ideology aside and refocus on academics because our kids are counting on you.
Next, we have Carlos. Carlos will be followed by Dr. Keisha White. Dr. White, if you'll make your way down. As I call you behind the person, would you please come down so we can keep it efficient?
Good evening, Board Trustees, Board President, Superintendent. My name is Carlos Turcios, and I'm just here to talk about the academic performance of the ISD. The ISD's performance is lower than Dallas and Houston ISD, and as the board votes on a new board president, it is important that the board president is truly 100% focused on our students. TA data shows our black students, our Hispanic students, basically every group is behind, but most importantly, our black students. And I highly encourage that whoever's the next board president focuses on a different approach on equity and making sure that our students are truly successful. I highly encourage y'all to emphasize the importance of entrepreneurship skills, because building wealth in those communities is the only way those students will be able to strive. I have both my parents that are here. You know, my father's a hard-working man, and I'll tell you this. He was discriminated. He was, of course, abused, but he worked hard, and he makes more money than an American was born here. Thank you.
Dr. Keisha White will be followed by Tiffany Rogers. If Tiffany will start making her way down to the podium.
Greetings. My name is Dr. Keisha White.
Hello, all.
I speak as a mother of a black son, Aiken White, whom you all just gave a standing ovation, and a founder of the Prep Factor, which is a college nonprofit organization here, based here in Fort Worth. You're familiar with the movie quote, "If you build it, they will come." Well, that same premise can be applied to underrepresented youth having access to programs and organizations like My Brothers Keeper, Alpha Academy, and mine. My point is, if you offer it, they will thrive. Organizations like ours are critical lights in a darkness for youth. They offer social capital, economic empowerment, and cultural relevance. My son, Aiken, has benefited substantially from his participation and his connection to them, redefining growing up in a single-parent household. Collectively, we developed him into the young man that you see today. He is now a global competitor, winning a Gucci Changemaker Scholarship, where he competed against students from three continents. So, supporting these programs is essential. Equitable supporting of youth is truth, humanity, and unity. Stop educational lynching!
Next, we have Tiffany Rogers. Tiffany will be followed by Kent Bradshaw. Please, I'm going to ask you to please behave yourselves. Thank you. We have Tiffany Rogers, and will be followed by Kent Bradshaw. Kent, if you'll make your way down as well.
One of my favorite quotes is by Maya Angelou, "You do your best until you know better, and then you do better." I have lots of thoughts about racial equity work. That quote seems to sum it up, "We know better," and I applaud and support the district's work to continually do better by improving student experiences and outcomes through racial equity work. I have a public school education, yet in my mid-40s is when I learned about the Tulsa massacre. I want better for our students here in Fort Worth ISD. I am a white mother of white children, and I am beyond grateful that my kids are in a district that values teaching, truth, and doing the work racial equity requires. Please keep valuing and supporting that work. We need that truth. We need that humanity, and we need unity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kent Bradshaw. Kent will be followed by Alexander Montalvo. If Alexander will start making his way down.
My name's Kent Bradshaw, and I have kids in this district. First, critical race theory is being taught to kids about as often as we teach physics to second graders. Children are not being indoctrinated to hate themselves or anyone else. Save that fight for when your kid goes to law school. That's where they teach CRT. Second, Fort Worth ISD is pursuing educational equity for all of our kids. It means giving more to those kids who need it when they need it. This work addresses issues of poverty and recognizes the cultural differences of the kids in our community and how it impacts their learning. Compromising this equity work would only set back the kids who are trying to bridge the largest educational gaps. Think of our common humanity. Our kids see it in each other, no matter what they look like or where they come from. They also see the inequities around them, and they are watching us and learning from us. Finally, we must work towards unity. Will we come together to show America's original promise of equal opportunity is fulfilled...
Thank you, Mr. Bradshaw.
...is fulfilled and becomes the truth for the first time?
Thank you. We now have Alexander Montalvo. Alexander will be followed by Danya Kradak.
Thank you, all. I'm a Latino parent of two amazing students in Fort Worth ISD. They are two of the over 50,000 Latino students in the district, which represent the majority of the 80,000 students in Fort Worth ISD. My oldest just finished eighth grade at Leonard Middle School and is going to ninth grade at Western Hills. My youngest is entering fourth grade at Waverly Park Elementary. I'm here to share my support for the Fort Worth ISD's racial equity work. This includes, but is not limited to, the following. The district shall not tolerate lower academic achievement for any student, racial or ethnic group compared to peers. The district shall develop employees' personal, professional, organizational skills and knowledge in order to empower employees to address racial and ethnic disparities. I'm thankful for the racial inequality policy that allows my daughters to be in a district that is intentional with ensuring every student will have equitable access to high-quality culturally and personally relevant instruction, even when this means differentiating resources to accomplish this goal. Let's keep officers appointed that will make this work at the forefront of Fort Worth ISD's direction, truth, humanity, and unity.
Thank you. Next, we have Danya. Danya will be followed by Catherine Pampa. Is Danya here? I don't see Danya. So, we're going to go with Catherine Pampa, and Jason Pena will be right after Catherine.
I'm a mom of four kids in Fort Worth ISD. I received this advertisement in the mail the other day to rediscover Fort Worth ISD, and I'll tell you, what I discovered actually led my husband and I to pull our kids out and put them in private school. Academics in the district are on a decline, as apparent by recent data and my own observed experience. And now I've seen critical racist theory enter the school. Even before the superintendent was on video saying CRT is an important feature in Fort Worth ISD, I found it in tools used such as Brain Pop and vocabulary. CRT is reformulated Marxism, a neo-racist worldview that exists to agitate, enable radical identity politics, divide people, and force children to see themselves as either an oppressor or a victim. Fort Worth ISD has the responsibility and privilege to educate, not indoctrinate, students. You do not have the right to violate a child's conscience. Fort Worth ISD should strive for excellence, a notion that brings everyone up and inspires people from all backgrounds.
Next, we have Jason. We have Jason Pena. Jason will be followed by Hedy Pena. Jason here? Hedy Pena? Not here? Okay. Jason, Hedy not here. Allison Campoli? Alisson will be followed by Teresa Ramirez.
Hello. My name is Dr. Allison Campolo. I'm here today to address academic schools. Since whether teaching equity can be banned from our public schools, and I'm standing up today to say that teaching and understanding unity is essential to our education in this country. Racism is systemic, and it is institutional, and colorblindness does nothing but whitewash history. By maintaining a false narrative that no race has ever subjugated any other in this country by using the color of their skin to justify slavery and genocide, we take no responsibility for our history, and we deny all of us the ability to move forward. It will take a pronounced effort from all of us in order to make our schools more equitable, and turning a blind eye to our past only dooms our future. Thank you.
Next, we have Teresa Ramirez. Teresa will be followed by Natalie Gonzalez.
As a former Aspire volunteer at Brownville ISD, a program funded by the 21st Century Community Learning Center administered by the Department of Education, I volunteered at this nonprofit, and I found it to be influential and highly interactive. I met with selective students and cooked my traditional meals with them in the teacher's lounge. It was an opportunity to speak to them in an intimate level. They had a great time, plenty of smiles. No CRT at all. Diversity in students, just enjoying each other's company instead of being filled with divisive material of oppression and stress that they are hated and no future in this country. I took the opportunity to walk with Ms. Olbely, and as she arrived to the courthouse, she said, "This is not... This is a day that they should be taught not to hate, and they can be taught to love." Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Natalie Gonzalez, and Natalie will be followed by Dr. Max Crockmaw.
As an advocate for suicide awareness, I am appalled at what CRT is bringing into our schools. CRT is not teaching education. It is a false ideology and a rejection of what the Constitution proclaims. This theory is manipulating children and teens by telling them they have no future or prosperity because of color of their skin. The distorted lie of everyone who is white is racist, and emphasized "higher than another" is deceiving and a misconceived fallacy. May I remind those who speak such words of President Abraham Lincoln and what he has achieved for this country to become unified in diversity. I will refuse to stand by and observe CRT lower the expectations, poison the minds of my nephews and nieces, or lose another to teach suicide. I will never accept the idea that one cannot endure in education or know the purpose of their worth because of an agenda of self-deception. My band consists of Korean, Nigerian, Mexican, Caucasian descent. Not once did our color interfere with our similar passions. Stop looking through a lens of race and ethnic representation. Instead, do as Martin Luther believed, and look at character.
Next, we have Dr. Max Crockmaw. Dr. Crockmaw will be followed by Kimberly Williams. Kimberly, if you'll start making your way down.
Hello, Board. I'm Max Crockmaw. I teach history and ethnic studies at TCU. You know, I'm frankly blown away by the conversation that's happening here today and the ways in which people would spin conspiracy theories and frankly endanger our children. I'm a parent in the district, and I'm proud of this district. For the last five years, you all have led the way in this state and in this nation in actually prioritizing the elimination of racial inequality in your district. You do that for a simple reason. The evidence says you should. There's a huge volume of research that shows that culturally responsive and historically accurate curriculum, along with attention to racial equity across all district practices, produces better student outcomes. You people who are applauding MBK students but don't stand for racial equity need to go somewhere else. As far as I'm concerned, we need leadership. We need leadership in this district that will stand up for racial equity all the time.
Kimberly Williams. Kimberly will be followed by Wanda McKinney. Everyone, please. Kimberly has the floor, and Kimberly will be followed by Wanda McKinney. Shh. Thank you.
As an African-American female educator, the topic of racial equity, a former student comes to mind. She was a Hispanic female student who failed the STAR test multiple times and was contemplated in dropping out of school. Building in culturally relevant supports to assist her in making connections to what she was learning made a huge difference. Needless to say, that year she passed the STAR test, and that changed her life. It is culturally relevant teaching and other strategies that make black, brown, and other underserved populations of students feel safe and supported in schools. Have you thought about how our black and brown kids feel in these spaces? What if your own child had roadblocks that hindered their access to learn? Where would you stand? We know that when racial equity is not consciously addressed, racial inequality is often unconsciously replicated. What we are here to do is to encourage truth, humanity, and unity.
Next, we have Wanda. Ms. Wanda will be followed by Ken Cool. If Ken would make his way down as well. If Ken would make his way down as well.
Good evening. My name is Wanda McKinney. I'm a Fort Worth ISD racial equity committee member and a 67-year-old Black female. When I attended a predominantly white school in 1967 in Houston, it was a terrible experience. But I can remember one thrill that I had, and that was receiving a brand-new textbook, and for the first time, I was able to write my name on the first line of the inset. Back at my old school in the Black community, I never received a book that wasn't worn and that didn't have a name written on almost every line. The older editions were given to the Black schools, which resulted in us being behind academically. Almost 55 years later, Black and Brown students at Fort Worth ISD are still far behind their white peers, and many schools are still segregated. The only way to close the racial achievement gap is for there to be an equitable distribution of quality human and material resources to those schools that need them the most. Dr. King said, "The time is always right to do right." I pray that you do the right thing for the sake of truth, humanity, and unity.
Thank you. Next, we have Ken. Ken will be followed -- Ken will be followed by Tamara Hutchinson.
Evening. I'm a white male with a white daughter that attends a Fort Worth ISD Title I school, and I support the racial equity work that you are doing. We've heard talking points tonight from political groups that are just dog whistles. They're attempting to mischaracterize equity work. Critical race theory is not taught in our schools. It's not in any Texas K-212 curriculum. What is happening in Fort Worth ISD is important, beautiful, unifying racial equity work by this board and this administration, and I want that to continue for my daughter and for all Fort Worth ISD students. These political voices are anti-equity and anti-truth, and they spring from a place of fear. They fear what equity means for them, instead of embracing what actually means for disenfranchised and marginalized populations in our city. And what that means is truth, humanity, and unity. Thank you for your service.
Next, we have Tamara Hutchinson. Tamara will be followed by Reverend Chad Presley.
My name is Tamara Hutchinson, and I'm a community advocate and former educator. We need continued policies and practices representative of the student population in Fort Worth, which is predominantly Latinx and African-American. We also need continued efforts towards racial equity in Fort Worth ISD to combat educational inequities. We need elected board officers who will continue the fight and understand learning socially and racially conscious material, build autonomy, cultivates community, and creates a space for honest conversations. Over 60% of students are still at risk of dropping out, and over 80% are economically disadvantaged, which is higher than the state average. Fort Worth ISD still has an average rating of closing the gap and increasing student achievement. The Fort Worth Education Partnership Report found schools with higher concentrations of economically disadvantaged students by districts attend poorly rated schools. Learning and addressing race does not build disunity but community to actively combat systemic racism within our district and schools. Thank you.
Next, we have Reverend Chad Presley. Reverend Chad will be followed by Wallace Bridges.
Hello. I'm Reverend Chad Presley. I'm pastor here in Fort Worth. In 2005, President Bush told five Texas newspapers that he believes public schools should discuss intelligent design theory alongside evolution. He advocated that schools teach the controversy. He said, "I think that part of education is to expose people to different schools of thought. You're asking me whether or not people ought to be exposed to different ideas?" He said the answer is yes. But for years, we have said that the honest way forward is to give teachers the freedom to teach truth, and if not truth, then at least various sides of the issue. But now in Texas and the rest of the country, many in power are trying to stop teachers from having important conversations about race and racism altogether. Teachers cannot teach America's actual history without including honesty about race and racism, even if some think it's controversial. So while people of good faith may disagree about how the world is made, it should not be controversial that God cares about everybody, and every child's story cannot be told if we shut their mouth about race and racism.
Thank you. Next, we have Wallace Bridges. Wallace will be followed by Nate Schatzlin, I believe. Nate, please make your way down to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Wallace Bridges. I've been working in the community for over 20 years. I'm here to talk about when we as a community can share our experience, that is the beginning of our healing. I had an awesome experience through the racial equity department. I went to a training, and I sat at a table with about six people, were Black, Brown, white, Hispanic, young and old, and in that we created a communist -- most of us who would have never had that opportunity to sit at a table and talk to each other. One of the conversations that we had, which was so close to my heart, talking about the experience as African-Americans in interaction with the police department. I talked about with every child, I had to go through the steps to tell them what happens when you get in the car. You stop by cop. Don't do this, don't do this. And I can see a guy who's -- my white brother who was sitting there with his arm folded, and all of a sudden, he changed because he realized he never had to have that conversation with his kid. Thank you.
Next, we have Nate. Nate will be followed by Michelle Sanchez.
My name is Nate. I am a concerned parent, and I have been a public school mentor for the last 10 years as well as an educator. Look, we all know that on December 1st, 19 -- excuse me, 1955, Rosa Parks denied giving up her seat to a white man on a bus in Alabama just down the road from my hometown. She denied giving up her seat because she got there first. She had just as much right to sit there as anybody else. See, equality says that you have the right to sit where you want, earn what you want, and achieve what you want, not because of the color of your skin, but because of the character of your heart. However, equity argues that minorities aren't enough, that they aren't capable enough, and that they're too oppressed to do anything on their own, so that the white man has to apologize for their skin tone and throw the minorities a bone if they're ever going to be successful. Now, that right there sounds racist to me. And so, as we look at it, isn't that the definition of real racism? However, we are teaching our students that they are labeled by the color of their skin when in reality, it should be their character, and that's what we have to teach.
Thank you. Next, we have Michelle. Michelle will be followed by Victoria Vazquez. Michelle, Victoria, please make your way down. Michelle Sanchez not here? Okay, Michelle. And Michelle will be followed by Victoria Vazquez. So, Victoria, please. Victoria coming on down? Victoria's not here? Yes? Okay. Michelle's not here? Okay. Victoria will be followed by Jody Sanders.
Good evening. My name is Victoria Vazquez. I'm a proud educator Latina and fourth-generation Fort Worthian, whose grandparents attended segregated Fort Worth ISD schools and parents were bused during integration. I'm here to advocate that Fort Worth ISD continues to implement systems that promote equity for all students regardless of race, socioeconomic status, or ability. Systems that disaggregate academic, disciplinary, and attendance data by subgroups to reveal any disparities and create goals based on true data. Systems that center humanity by recruiting and retaining teachers of color, ensure the highest needs students have access to the best and most experienced teachers. Systems that foster unity by ensuring families have access to high-quality schools and engaging coursework like Mexican-American and African-American studies. Continue incorporating an equity lens when determining district policies. Racial equity is crucial for Fort Worth's future. Truth, humanity, and unity.
Thank you. Next, we have Jody Sanders. Jody will be followed by Pastor Sultan Cole. If Pastor Cole would make his way down.
Hi. I'm a parent, and I'm here to thank you for your commitment to racial equity and teaching our kids about truth and history. In a year where we remember the Tulsa Race Massacre 100 years ago, where we finally commemorate Juneteenth as a holiday, and where we still reckon with racial inequity, I'm thankful that my kids get to learn these difficult histories and confront uncomfortable topics I didn't get growing up. There's people that want you to ignore these things in the name of unity, but we can't truly unify if we don't confront and understand what divides us. In a year when we sanitized every inch of our schools from top to bottom, thank you for not sanitizing the truth, that race threads all parts of our society, and that by learning together, we can improve student outcomes, and we can avoid repeating history as we unite in truth, humanity, and unity. Thank you.
Next, we have Pastor Cole. Pastor Cole will be followed by Pastor Ryan Price.
Carter G. Woods, and father of Black history, said, "Those who have no record of what their forebears have accomplished lose the inspiration which comes from teaching, biography, and history. You can tell a great deal about a country and a people by what they deem important enough to remember, what they put in their museums, what they learn in their classrooms, and what they celebrate. While America traditionally revels in the Revolutionary War of Independence, the Civil War battles, and our founding fathers, yet I would suggest that we learn even more about a country by what it chooses to forget, its mistakes, its disappointments, and yes, its embarrassments. The struggles of the past teach us about our present. I would suggest tonight, however, that one learns even more by examining what a nation chooses to forget, what decisions and what groups are admitted from the national memory, reveal not only a great deal about a nation's history, but about its current political and societal concerns. We must remember that African-American history is American history, and yes, it includes slavery, the era of Jim Crow, Reconstruction, and Civil Rights Movement, but it also includes Tulsa, Oklahoma's Black Street massacre. It's about how these events have a profound impact and reach that continues today. In closing, W.E.B. Du Bois, founder, member of the NAACP --"
Thank you, Pastor Cole. Thank you, Pastor Cole. Thank you, Pastor Cole. That's your time, sir. Next, we have Pastor Ryan Price. Pastor Price will be followed by Martha Van Norden.
Good evening, President Ramos, Dr. Scribner, and members of the board. I'm the Reverend Ryan Price, and I have three children in Fort Worth ISD public schools. I'm also the senior pastor of Broadway Baptist Church here in town and a member of pastors for Texas children. I wish to commend the board for its courage in seeking to specifically address the issues of racial and cultural inequity within our district, and I want to encourage you to continue in that work, as achieving a more equitable and inclusive place of learning for all students is essential for the future of our community. In the church, we have a saying, "Keep your hand on the plow. You're plowing hard ground." The roots of racism and inequity are deep, and they are trenchant. So much more reason to hold on tight and keep at it for the sake of truth, humanity, and unity.
Thank you, Price. Next, we have Martina Van Norden. Martina will be followed by Tracy Jenkins, and Tracy would make her way to the podium.
Greetings. My name is Martina Van Norden. Imagine it's 1963. A young Black male was all prepared to graduate from the segregated IM Terrell High School. He had exceptional academic and athletic abilities, so it was quite an accomplishment to receive a track scholarship to an out-of-state college. But he had to decline the offer because, to his surprise, his high school transcript had no math courses and no official waiver to explain the missing course credits. I am his daughter, and this is the story. I recalled when I relocated here from Howard County, Maryland, and I had to make a school choice for his grandson. Not a good look of what you did to his grandfather. Now, I could have told this story from a professional perspective as a career educator, but decided to speak on behalf of my family's legacy, challenging you to consider the historical opportunity gap for Black and Brown males in Fort Worth ISD, encouraging you to keep steadfast on this racial equity work. Do not allow fragility to seduce you.
Thank you, Martina. Next, we have Tracy. Tracy will be followed by Jenny Crossland. If Jenny would make their way down to the podium.
CRT proponents, woke teachers, and administrators claim that all disparities and outcomes are the result of systemic racism. That's easily disproved. The creation of microaggressions, which teaches children to take offense at innocuous perceived slights, wouldn't be necessary if real racism was the culprit. They also refuse to acknowledge ability, effort, creativity, or good choices made in having a role in success. CRT's appeal to equity, which is a euphemism for forced equal outcomes, is just a mask for the spiritual diseases of lust for power, envy, and greed. Like a cult, they specialize in severing God-ordained, healthy bonds while stoking the fires of discontent and bitterness. I'm fighting CRT because every precious innocent child who is miseducated to be a perpetually offended narcissist is likely to grow up to hate others, hate their country, and become a destructive force for chaos.
Thank you. Next, we have Jenny. Jenny Crossland. Looks like Jenny's not here, so we will move -- I'm sorry, Jenny. Okay, Jenny will be followed by Allison Kelly. Allison, if you would also make your way to the podium.
Good afternoon to the board and superintendent. My name is Jennifer Crossland, and I'm a mother of two young children, and we live in this district. I'm here because as I plan their educational path, I'm very concerned with what's going on in Fort Worth ISD. By my research, this district has a 34% math and literacy rate at grade level. I've asked around to other parents, both immigrants and also people with deep Fort Worth roots, all kinds of parents. They all say the same: Their children were not learning in Fort Worth ISD, and now that they have switched to private or alternative schools, their children are thriving. To add insult to injury, I've spoken with people in the court system who are deeply concerned with the number of children that simply didn't show up to class, and they're lost. I come here today because this school board and superintendent are more interested in teaching made-up CRT than you are for caring for our children's well-being and education, like reading.
Thank you. Next, we have Allison. Allison will be followed by Colby Shellhammer, I believe.
Hi, I'm Allison Kelly. I have four kids in Fort Worth that, as of last year, are no longer in Fort Worth ISD schools. Superintendent, you have a history of starting political battles that don't belong in our classrooms. In 2016, your secret bathroom policy allowing boys and girls bathrooms made national headlines. In 2019, 11-year-olds were introduced to perverted sex education curriculum without parental consent. We fought and reversed both of these alarming decisions. Today, you use our tax dollars to promote race-based Marxism. We have every intention of fighting once again while publicly exposing your inability to successfully lead this ISD with integrity. We are the fastest-growing city in Texas, yet our ISD falls among the lowest in academic achievements. Current students are withdrawing, and future enrollment is at a record low despite huge gains in population. Parents don't want what you're selling. Your job is not to indoctrinate children with the failed, dangerous Marxist [inaudible].
Thank you. Next, we have Colby. Colby will be followed by Devonte Guerra.
Is the time -- is the clock going? Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Colby Shellhammer, and I'm coming forth as a concerned citizen. The most important thing about this entire meeting is the children. When any theory, any framework, is undergirded with a premise described as "if you aren't A, then you must be B," or "you are B," is a form of emotional blackmail. If you aren't anti-racist, you are racist, a teaching that undergirds CRT, which you probably well know from your DNI officers. The tenets of CRT are evident in this regard and nothing compared to the truth of our Constitution-based inequality. We are not against teaching accurate history of those of every race that have helped build this country, but CRT is not that. Children are reporting that post-training experience that they feel less than, and in one boy's words, feels worthless about his born characteristics. You decide if that boy is Black or White.
Next, we have Devonte. Devonte will be followed by Terry Ramirez. Is Devonte here? Is Terry here? Terry Ramirez. Okay. Terry will be -- is this Devonte or Terry? Devonte? Okay, thank you. Devonte will be followed by Terry Ramirez, if Terry would make their way down.
My father is a United States veteran and a military officer. I believe he is a great man and a loving person. Critical race theory. CRT allows teaching in school that officers are bad and want to hurt you. My dad loves everyone and always lets me know I can do anything I love to do. He has taught me to respect others and make good decisions for myself. He will never harm anyone and loves my granny, Pa, and all my aunts and uncles and my cousins. I pray that you understand that you can do to keep him safe and others like him. Please keep CRT out of our schools. We need to love to be loved, not confused. Teach us good things so we can grow up and to be smart and strong and happy. I want to --
Thank you, Devonte. Next, we have Terry Ramirez. Devonte, thank you for sharing your thoughts. Is Terry here? Terry's not here? Griffin White? Griffin? Griffin will be followed by Jessica Cheek, if Jessica will make their way down.
My name is Griffin White.
My name is Griffin White, and I'm a recent graduate from Marine Creek Collegiate High School, a Fort Worth I S D school of choice. I recently had an encounter with the Department of Fort Worth I S D called Restorative Practices. I was the target of online bullying, which occurred off-campus, and yet the school asked me to participate in a restorative circle. I did not... Excuse me. I did not know what to expect going into this experience, but it left me highly disappointed. Restorative Practices is a doctrine which falls under the category of social-emotional learning and critical race theory, which have been implemented throughout this district. My problem with Restorative Practices is that it fails to restore anything at all. After sitting with my peers in a circle and talking about how the incident made us feel, there was no dialogue, no conflict resolution, and no apology. This is a waste of time and resources. However, my main issue is this appeared to be nothing more than another way that the district is trying to take the role of parenting away from the parents. How can we justify spending precious resources, taxpayer dollars, on doctrine in this district that does not benefit students? Thank you.
Next, we have Jessica. Jessica will be followed by Dona Anthony, if Dona would make their way down.
I'm Jessica Cheek. This Trojan horse of CRT is now in our city, giving the seemingly beneficial appearance of equity. However, its ideology is anything but positive. It is designed to destroy educational foundations, tearing people apart, making our children its greatest victims. My question to you is, how do you know you're right? Is CRT the best solution? Please consider Rosaria Butterfield, who was challenged with this same question. In the '90s, Butterfield designed women and queer studies at Syracuse University. She was wholeheartedly committed to Marxist-Darwinian, critical, and queer theory. She determined to disprove the existence of God by partnering with her enemy, a pastor, and reading the Bible seven times. The result? A new conclusion. She realized that it was her pride that she was right that had blinded her to the truth, and she submitted to the lordship of Jesus Christ. At the end of her life, will you look back and regret what you built your life's work on? Are you right?
Next, we have Dona Anthony. Dona will be followed by Michelle Shed. Dona here? Dona here? Next, we have Michelle Shed. Michelle here? Michelle Shed here? I'm sorry, we had it under Michelle. Sorry, it's Michael Shed then.
4% pay raises across the board for all district employees is money well-spent. I'm not here to complain about that because I voted for the recent tax increases. That being said, I can't help but wonder if we are going to get our money's worth from this leadership team. Will this superintendent and his leadership team be held accountable by this board for the continued failures of this district? Enrollment is down 12% since 2016. That is not all pandemic-related. That's $55 million in lost revenue. The voters did our part and gave you $66 million more to work with. Now, it's time for you to do your part. Unless this superintendent is capable of getting this district back on track, there needs to be drastic changes. There needs to be accountability for achievement. This board cannot possibly be satisfied that nearly 30% of our schools are failing with their D or an F, while Dallas is only 8%. Parents are losing trust in your ability to educate their children. It's... I've heard many of you talk about accountability on the campaign trail, but now it's time to get to work, improve Fort Worth I S D, and focus on students.
Next, we're going to have Tanya Block and Danielle Buck, following Tanya. I'll ask to please let Mr. Clint Bond handle the time announcement. Thank you, audience, for helping, but just let Mr. Bond handle that, please. Is Tanya here? Okay. Tanya will be followed by Danielle Buck, if Danielle would make their way down to the podium.
I come here to speak as an American citizen and a mother of two black boys. CRT is a transformation of relationships between law and racial power. We, as a human race, have taken history and perverted the very purpose of our forefathers. They did not die for us to go backwards. Teach my children all the facts of history, not vilify those people who were not even born or thought of at the time that this history was made. Will you also, since we want to get on the topic of first black people to do, are we also going to teach them that Anthony Johnson was the first black man to ever own a slave on his plantation? Will you also teach the children that white people were also slaves, Romans, and Greeks? This is dangerous. CRT is dangerous, and I will not feed this to my children. You say that children need CRT. I say children need more trade schools. I say children, the cursive writing, cursive writing you took out of schools. So instead of CRT, put cursive back into school.
Time. Thank you. Next, we have Danielle. Danielle will be followed by Jana Clark. If Jana Clark would start making their way to the podium.
Good evening, members. My name is Danielle Buck, and I strongly oppose CRT and actually the gender teaching that is attached to it. My son is a boy, and he will be a boy. CRT is an ideology that is wrong. More than that, it in itself is abusive, and it's racist and discriminatory. And I know that many of you think that you adopted it, thinking it was a good thing. But I believe in what God says in the Omago Day, that all of us have intrinsic value, regardless of the color of our skin. We have all been created in the very image of God. And so, in the name of ending discrimination, I think that these critical thinkers that started CRT developed a program that in itself is racist, and I think it flips the equation. So one of the founders said, "In order to be truly anti-racist, you have to be anti-capitalist." No, that's not true. CRT is unacceptable, and I will not be silent anymore, and I'm a mom that's teaching my son that how he is to treat others should be based on who they are and not on the color of their skin. Children should...
Time. Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Jana. Jana Clark. Jana will be followed by Mark Dempsey, if Mark Dempsey would make their way down to the podium.
Good evening. I'm here today speaking for unity and wholeness for all people, especially our future generations. Let's go back. In the beginning, God created man in his own image. We're all created equal. This is the truth, and this is the only thing that will abolish the sin of racism. Because we are all human, we all have the unfortunate capacity for partiality and hate. Think about what you might be thinking about me right now and your own prejudices against me. I'm against CRT, and I believe it should not be taught in our schools to our precious children. This cultural ideology is not a solution to unity but a tool for bondage, destruction, and further separation, and clearly the enemy of our day. Governments have historically used racism to divide nations and turn us against each other to control, manipulate, and dictate their ideologies onto us as free people. Don't be a pawn to this communist takeover.
Thank you. Next, we have Mark Dempsey. Mark will be followed by Tom Plumbley, if Tom would make their way to the podium.
Good evening, carbon-based units. I don't mean to offend or call you ladies and gentlemen. I've been here to tell you that I have been woke. At 3 o'clock in the morning, God woke me up from a deep sleep with a message. He sent me here to speak for the one that has been forgotten. The one I speak of is Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. He spoke to me, a sinner who loves this country more than you have ever been shown. My grandfather served, my father served, and I've served. My understanding is that you're supposed to be woke, which means you want the few or the one to bow down to you and give up their rights and freedoms. I'm here to tell you that looking after the few or the one is completely wrong in reality. You know the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few or the one. Speaking of this country, I don't judge the love for my country on how much I earn or how much I own. It's based on the freedom to do as I wish without the government interfering. In a free country, the government fears and serves the people, hence the name "public servant." The people should never fear their government.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Tom. Tom will be followed by Angel Martinez. Angel would please make their way down.
I'm Tom Plumbley. I'm the senior minister at First Christian Church, where we've been involved in public education from Fort Worth's very first school. Racial equity was simply not a reality in those days. That reality must be admitted. Please continue to educate our children about the truth, even the difficult parts of our racial history, even the institutional impact that history continues to have today. While we talk past each other tonight and set up CRT as a straw man to be shot at, I ask you, please, continue to teach my grandchildren the truth, teach them the humanity of all their neighbors, and help them to learn to create equity. It's not about helping them, making them feel bad about being white. It's about helping them learn ways all of us can someday overcome every evil through truth, humanity, and unity.
Next, we have Angel Martinez. Angel not here? Angel will be followed by Laura Wright. Laura will be followed by Amanda Woodruff. Is Laura here? And then, if Amanda would make their way down to the podium. Thank you.
I acknowledge that painful discrimination happens. People mistreat each other. It is wrong. But using another wrong to supposedly remedy racism is like the saying, "Two wrongs cannot make a right." CRT is wrong. Ironically, it is racism. How like the evil in this world to appear as an angel of light, to manipulate language and good-intentioned people, to make us think something is good when it is actually bad? Focusing on physical characteristics and cultural differences divides us. Since CRT started, we have seen much more hatred and violence. Kids naturally see differences. Our job is to shepherd them to understand these as positive, but CRT separates. It shames some, puffs up some, traps some in victimhood, and teaches distrust to all. Jesus said, "Do unto others as you would have them do to you. Love your neighbor as yourself." This is a good foundational principle that works. We humans are created with the same intrinsic value. By loving others, we can use our differences to unite and be strong together. Love has always righted many wrongs.
Thank you, Laura. Next, we have Amanda, and Amanda will be followed by Kylie Lawelly, I believe.
I'm Amanda Coleman, former Fort Worth I S D mom who moved to a charter school this year because I've lost faith in your leadership. Fort Worth I S D is behind. We don't even rank in the top 50 best public schools in Texas. In 2019, we received a 79 or C rating. However, it's not always been this way. In 2015, Fort Worth I S D was actually ahead of big districts such as Dallas and Houston. Now, Dallas and Houston, who have similar demographics and hurdles as us, were rated at an 86 and 88 as compared to our 79. What has changed since 2015? In 2016, we received a superintendent who has implemented his progressive ideas and failed approaches. One failed idea is hiring based on color and gender to meet diversity standards rather than who would be the best and most qualified fit for the school's needs. M L K said to judge someone based on the content of their character, not the color of their skin. The black and brown communities are behind, but the solutions Scribner and the district are promoting are not closing the gap. Let's try something that works in other districts.
Next, we have Kylie. Kylie will be followed by Susan Asfar.
As an educator, I have seen firsthand that it is not the color of a child's skin that determines their success. I have seen students of all skin colors thrive and succeed. The common denominator is not the color of their skin, but rather the support they have at home. One of the years I was teaching third grade, I had two male students who both had single moms struggling with addiction. One was white, and one was not. They received the same curriculum and the same teaching, but only one had the continued support of a grandparent who made sure his homework was complete, that he was at school each day, and who worked alongside me to meet the child's needs. That student was successful and made great strides during the year. The other did not. That child, the one who continues to succeed 11 years later, was not the white child. And thankfully, that little boy hadn't been misled to believe that his skin color would determine his future. We need to stop making excuses and focusing on a theory based in falsehoods. Stop instilling fear, division, and hatred. Stop labeling our children as the oppressed and the oppressors.
Thank you. Susan or Suzanne? Susan or Suzanne Asfar? Will be followed by Joe Cotterella. Joe would make their way down as well.
Hi, I am a concerned parent. The only reason I have kept my deaf kindergartner in Fort Worth I S D is because she's at a high-performing school. It does not push CRT rhetoric. If this district continues to fail academically and push divisive pedagogy, we will be leaving Fort Worth I S D. The division CRT creates is evident today. Clearly, it is not simply about teaching about racism or accurate history. We want that. This is a battle of language and ideology. We cannot have conversations about race when the definitions of words have changed, words like equity, justice, and racism have been hijacked as Trojan horses for smuggling identity politics into classrooms. Whatever you call it, we don't want it in our diversity and inclusion efforts, which are important. We want diversity and inclusion and programs like my brother's Keeper. We want y'all to succeed, students. We're proud of you. Let's value our differences instead of weaponizing them.
Thank you. We have Joe next. Joe will be followed by Judy Cotterella.
My name is Joe Cotterella. I'm a retired teacher of 33 years in physical education, 17 years of coaching. Fort Worth I S D, I taught 16 years. I retired in 2018. In my years of teaching, I have had to deal with multiple bomb threats, lockdown, SWAT teams, called out to protect our students, move our students from school to workers and grinds facility, with all teachers of color protecting students and staff of all color. I've never had anyone call me a racist. In my career, we all were the same because our leadership believed in equality. Critical race theory needs to stop now and get back to what Martin Luther King believed in. People should not be judged by the color of their skin but the content of their character. The time is always right to do what is right. The right thing to do is stop the hate and critical race theory that is being spread in Fort Worth I S D.
Thank you. Next, we have Judy. Judy will be followed by Pam Weatherford, if Pam would make their way to the other podium.
I've taught... My name is Judy Cotterella. I was... I taught as a teacher in Fort Worth I S D for 28 years. My concern is student achievement for all students, no matter their skin color. With scores for all demographics at a low rate and a C rating for the district, it's imperative that this board and this superintendent focus on and only on student achievement. According to TexasSchools.gov, only 14% of students master its grade level. With these kinds of numbers, we don't have any time to think about critical race theory. We need to think about reading, writing, and math. In my period as Fort Worth teacher, we made academic gains by data-driven instruction, monitoring student progress, collaborating with master teachers, and meaningful professional development. Today, Fort Worth I S D offers 52 hours of professional development in critical race theory. When I taught, principals were instructional leaders, and the school board was focused on true student achievement. Board members did not go to high schools to push their political agenda.
Next, we have Pam Weatherford. Pam will be followed by Philip Taggart.
Thank you. I'm Pam Weatherford. I saw the movie Twelve Mighty Orphans this weekend. I'm sure you know the story as it happened right here in Fort Worth. When the coach came to the orphanage, he found a group of young men who had been told they were worthless, did not matter, and no one cared. As a result, they lived up to that expectation. But as the coach started working with these young men, he not only taught them how to play football, he taught them something much more important, that they were worthy, they mattered, they had a purpose, and he gave them hope. They learned to read and write, and they excelled not only on the football field and classroom, but in life. Critical race theory provides the same pathetic narrative to students of color. It is failing them, it's failing our schools, and it's failing our future generation. I implore you to abolish critical race theory and get back to the basics of reading, writing, and math, and instilling hope and a future for every student in the Fort Worth I S D.
Thank you. Next, we have Philip. Philip will be followed by Arch Mayfield. Is Philip here? And Arch, if you'd also make your way to the podium. And Arch will be followed by James Hill.
Thank you. I want to read a heartbreaking excerpt of a letter from a student to his teacher regarding CRT's impact. He said, "My eighth-grade teacher, English teacher, my eighth-grade English teacher taught us for the first two weeks about pretty much how awful white men are. For two weeks, I did not speak a single word in class. My fellow white student, male student classmates left the classroom every time feeling the same way. Those teachings made me feel like worthless scum undeserving of living. My white classmates were constantly using the pronoun "we" when talking about slavery. Eventually, I had to raise my hand and remind them that we were not and are not a part of those despicable acts. Most of our parents were refugees from foreign countries whose ancestors were also oppressed and persecuted. There are girls that generally believe that all men are misogynist... I see movements on social media like CAM, which stands for "Kill All Men." People don't realize how strongly that affects boys. People don't realize how strongly that affects boys in an extremely negative way." Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Arch. Arch will be followed by James Hill.
I've been an educator for many decades. Tonight, I'm sharing some thoughts from a fellow educator, a friend of mine, Ernie Moran, a Fort Worth ISD teacher and parent. We both feel as educators, it's necessary to address the critical race theory debate. The notion that educating our professionals on how systemic racism operated in every facet of society in our nation's history and still affects us today, the notion that that in itself is racist would be laughable if it weren't so troubling. Nobel laureate Desmond Tutu famously said, "If you are neutral in situations of injustice, you have chosen the side of the oppressor." CRT is a framework for educating people to recognize oppression and not choose neutrality. If you are so privileged as to prefer neutrality, you must cast your supply. As a society, we must have honest dialogue about issues of race and be ready when students want to have those discussions in our classrooms.
Arch is now followed by James Hill. James will be followed by Walter Floyd. If Walter would make their way down as well.
I'd like to quote Dr. Martin Luther King. "Intelligence plus character, that is the goal of true education." When Dr. King speaks about character, he speaks about individual moral achievements, not groupthink. Critical race theory, by its very nature, ignores individual achievement and judges people based on skin color. Dr. King also said, "Returning violence for violence multiplies violence." I would say returning racism for racism only multiplies racism. Dr. King famously said, "It is always the right time to do the right thing." Do the right thing and remove all forms of CRT and its little brothers and sisters from the school district so that you can better serve your children, and remove anyone who pushes this horrible ideology of CRT. Thank you.
Next, we have Walter Floyd. Walter will be followed by Andy Hopper. If Andy would make their way down. Andy will be followed by Lana or Lena Austin.
Hello, I'm here. For the same reason I hope everyone else is, and that's for the betterment of this community and its citizens. However, we may not feel in the same way to get there. I love the city of Fort Worth, and I'm for treating people equally and fairly. I am for the truth. I'm not for teaching or implementing critical race theory in our schools. CRT victimizes minorities, strips them of their self-worth. CRT minimizes and villainizes hard-working people, the very people who are the, who are, who are some of the largest donors to the nonprofits that help needs of the community. CRT promotes racism. It's divisive amongst our community. It promotes fake guilt. CRT is based on Marxist principles. Thing that really concerns me about you, about what's going on here at the ISD, is you use things and you take out really what they mean. This says equity on it. That's not equity.
Thank you. Next, we have Andy Hopper. Andy will be followed by Lena Austin.
The end of the Communist Manifesto states that communists everywhere support every revolutionary movement against the social and political order of things. Sowing CRT into the public school curriculum would please Marx, as the goal is to divide students into racial factions rather than unite them as Texans. CRT places value onto the color of students' skin rather than the value of our shared ideals. CRT rejects Texan and American exceptionalism and puts the identity of a racial group as more significant than individual achievement. CRT seeks to incite, inflame, and divide. It paints our history as a mere struggle between oppressors and oppressed rather than the actual triumph of Western civilization and the freedom of individuals and the rule of law over totalitarianism. CRT does not seek equality. It seeks equity of outcome. It picks winners and losers. It defies the ideas of the American dream and the ideals that our fathers of all colors fought for. Thank you.
After Lena Austin is Brett Austin. If Brett would come to the podium.
I'm an advocate for all the children. CRT is reformulated Marxism. Would we ever allow the KKK, that's the Ku Klux Klan, to teach their philosophies in our public schools? Hell, no. So why in the world have you already brought CRT and its perversion into our schools and these innocent children's lives? You will not pervert the next generation of God's children in our country, not on my watch. We will not tolerate the schools to indoctrinate our children. This agenda will stop right now. CRT's end goal is racial division and an end to the American ideas of equal treatment under the law. Make no mistake, we are the point on the arrow to stop this diabolical, to stop this diabolical division in Texas. Leave our children...
Next, we have Brett. Brett will be followed by Blanca Martinez. If Blanca would make her way down.
When I was a child, we were taught to honor the flag of our country. On the few days I had the flag duty, we were all nervous that the flag we were responsible for might touch the ground, and we would have failed in our duty. These days, many look favorably, unfavorably, upon even you flying our flag. One of the many horrific results of critical race theory is that it teaches that our country and its citizens is inherently weak or inherently evil. How can a child that learns in that environment possibly take pride in their country? How can they possibly choose to serve others or their country with such teaching? We live in the greatest country in the world, a very flawed but awesome land. It was built on faith in God, not on slavery. If it was not so, there would not be such a long line to get in. CRT is a divisive teaching that will produce opposite results, opposite results that it expires to. Please keep this dark teaching out of our schools, community, the United States of America.
Next, we have Blanca Martinez. Blanca will be followed by Brad McDaniel. Is Blanca here? Blanca here? Okay, we're moving to Brad McDaniel. Brad will be followed by, I'm sorry. So Blanca's here, and then Brad will be next, and then Kelly Jaul will be after Brad.
Hello, my name is Blanca Martinez, and I'm here because I'm concerned about what, I'm a grandmother of three children in Fort Worth that are getting ready to start school, but I'd rather homeschool them because I'm terrified about what's happening, not only with the CRT, but more importantly with the vaccines. Hopefully, that will stop as well. CRT is a poison. It's a poison to the mind. It corrupts. Vaccines is a poison to your body, and it kills. Fort Worth has been doing both. If this superintendent has implemented CRT in our schools, which is so divisive, so racist, so evil, and he had children being bused to get vaccinations from the schools to the sites in the schools, providing food and all of that, not looking into the damage that it was doing to the children, I say it's time to change our superintendent.
Next, we have Brad. Brad will be followed by Kelly.
I find it sad that none of the pastors so far, sad but telling, none of the pastors so far have mentioned Jesus. I'm not a pastor, but I will. The devil seeks to destroy through division. Ethnic hatred and bigotry are some of the tools of division he uses most effectively. We live in a fallen world, so true unity will only be achieved in eternity by communion with God through Jesus Christ. But until then, we can, at the very least, reject worldviews and ideologies like CRT that seek to divide us into categories based on our skin color. Our goal for Fort Worth ISD, our city, and our nation is diversity without division. We believe that we are all image bearers of God, one human race consisting of two genders made up of numerous skin colors, ethnicities, backgrounds, and cultures which should be understood and celebrated for their histories and differences. We are not advocating a ban on the teaching of history. We are advocating a ban on neo-Marxist socialist theories such as CRT that seek to divide and destroy our country and our children.
Next, we have Kelly. Kelly Jaul. Kelly will be followed by Jaclyn Booth. If Jaclyn would make their way down.
I'm here to talk about the coercion of the Tarrant County school districts for our children getting vaccinated. And right now, since the, since they passed the visor use for 12- to 17-year-olds, there have been 86% adverse effects from this experimental injection. Children, especially boys, are getting myocarditis, which is enlargement of the heart. The CDC refuses to say how many people have died and still investigating heart damage in our kids. Well, I was at Commissioner's Court not too long ago, and they, of the people that had been vaccinated, 70% were white, and just single percentages were African-American, Asian, and Hispanic, and they want to go after the African-American, Hispanic, and Asian communities with this experimental injection.
Thank you. Next, we have Jaclyn Booth. Jaclyn will be followed by Reverend Ryan Price. If Reverend Price would make their way down.
Welcome to our new trustees, and thank you to our experienced trustees for their time on the board. You all ran for the opportunity to have power in your voice, and you now have it. Jesus met the disciples on the road to Damascus. He asked them what they were debating on the way, and three times they referenced the word "talk." Talk, 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 talk. The superintendent has tried and failed. Under his authority, our teachers feel silenced. They never see him in their schools nor classrooms. His leadership doesn't work here. Our district is failing academically. Our district has fallen to one of the worst in the state. Under this super, our district has seen its Good Friday. Parents are mourning the lost potential wasted on our children. Trustees, are you ready for an Easter Sunday? Are you ready to replace him with a leader who can breathe into our beautiful, diverse, and intelligent district? God love you as you seek out a turnaround expert to impact the lives of our community and make Fort Worth a district to be emulated. Don't be trustees who talk, talk, talk. Take action and be the board that made us better.
Thank you. Next, we have Reverend Ryan Price. Okay, we have Darren Swain. It's Darren Swain. And then Darren will be followed by Kelly Gamble. Is Darren here? Okay. Darren will be followed by Kaylee, Kelly Gamble. Kelly would come down.
I'm here today because I don't understand what's going on with the school board to even consider giving a vaccination to kids. The COVID results were less than 1% anyway to begin with, and the kids don't die from COVID-19. All this is an experimental drug. We don't even know what's in it. They don't even give you the information to even determine what you put in it. And y'all are actually considering doing something that crazy? You need to protect the people's rights, do no harm. There's no reason to do it. The kids need to have a full, healthy life, and I'm sick and tired of the stuff that y'all are pulling. Do not do anything to the kids. I want y'all to keep your oath of office and pursue other matters, but as far as vaccination, there's no need for it. It's experimental. It's actually a war crime against people, and there's no reason for it, and I demand that y'all stop doing it, even thinking about doing it to kids.
Thank you. Next, we have Kelly. Kelly will be followed by Dr. Michael Bell. If Dr. Bell would come down.
Father, may we humbly ask for your presence to fill this room, this school district, and this city, for you are forever welcome here. Would you bless this school board and each one of us to be accompanied by a spirit of truth that reveals every hidden darkness? Would you protect us from the very spirit of division that wishes to devour us as a people and as a nation? Would you smile on the memory of men like Martin Luther King and John Newton and bless us with the same conviction that moved them to change the world for the better? Would you be gracious to a fort that was intended to forever protect and defend your light? Would you allow your angelic armies to minister the favor you speak forth? And finally, would you come and be the Lord of hosts to what is disguising itself as an ideological war? But Father, we know full well it is spiritual. We ask, do whatever it takes to accomplish your good and perfect will in this city. Amen, in Jesus's name.
Thank you. Next, we have Dr. Michael Bell. Dr. Bell will be followed by Kenya Alu, if Kenya would come down.
Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. once said, "Nothing in the world is more dangerous than sincere ignorance and conscientious stupidity." What Dr. King was saying is that there is nothing more harmful than someone who believes something merely because someone else told them it was true, or someone who passionately believes something without any proof, especially when they use this belief as an excuse to limit others. In an effort to vilify any teaching and conversations about race and equity in Fort Worth ISD, some political manipulators have purposely leveraged outrage over such teaching by using the often maligned and seldom understood critical race theory as a convenient catch-all to oppose any serious attempt to teach the full breadth of America's history. These manipulators are simply using this threat of the CRT as a hobgoblin to rally against and shut off access to equity altogether. This representation will not go untapped.
Next, we have Kenya Alu. Kenya will be followed by David Kapper. If David would also make their way to the podium.
My name is Kenya Alu. I'm a concerned citizen. My kids have not been exposed to CRT directly because I homeschool, and now we are moving towards private school. It is for reasons such as these that my kids are not in the public school system. I have always taught my kids that there are all kinds of good people and have modeled the lifestyle of being friends with all different skin colors. At any different event, any given event that I host, you will see brown, black, white, all getting along, all building relationships. I don't understand why we would want to take society backwards through a hateful curriculum, and I don't want my kids to label people because of the skin color. I have taught them their entire lives not to do that, and I don't intend to stop now.
Thank you. Next, we have David Kapper. David will be followed by Dania Corley. If Dania would come, make their way to the podium.
Greetings, David Kapper, physician and an educator. You know, I can't believe you guys do this for all this big pay. I'm jealous of your pay. Let me just start off with that. But that being said, I do have a couple things I'd just like to remind everybody. Truth, humanity, and unity. There's not a person in this room that doesn't believe in truth, humanity, and unity. The question is, is what's the mechanism that we go about to achieve that? CRT is not that mechanism. CRT is not education. And this is the point that I'd like to remind everybody. This is about education, and our whole desire here is to educate our future of America, and to educate them well as to love their neighbors, educate them well as to their history, the full history, the total history, without an agenda. And I would encourage you not to serve with CRT, but to really go ahead and spend your time focusing in on that education.
Thank you. Next, we have Dania. Dania will be followed by Zandra Carland, if Zandra would come on down.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to have a quote by Bob Woodson, who is the founder of 1776 Unites. I would encourage all of you to look at his work he's doing. It is not CRT work, but he marched with Martin Luther King. So all these quotes that people have quoted on Martin Luther King, he was with him, he knew him, and he is furthering and continuing his work. That's a person to, that is a great resource to help bring about some of the equality that all of us want for all students. If all of us had a pen and pricked ourself, we would all bleed the same color. Our skin tone makes us unique and beautiful, but it should not divide us, and it should not be our primary identity. We were created by, for, through, and in love, and that should be the mark that we leave on the world. Let's stop CRT, and let's get together and come up with better solutions.
Zandra's up next, and will be followed by Armando Cobos, if Armando would make their way down.
Many years ago, I was the only brown student among white classmates and teachers. I was ridiculed and belittled by them because of my skin color. If my school implemented... If my school implemented CRT, I would have had the higher moral ground because I crossed several lines of intersection: color, ethnicity, handicap, and gender. Would CRT have helped me? No. It would have brought further condescension and even antagonism. I am here to ask you to stop investing time, money, in implementing the CRT ideology in our schools. A focus on racism, oppression, and victimization will not manifest in the fruits of equality, unity, imagination, and intellect, but division and hatred. I was healed of the trauma of bullying, not by blaming, but by forgiving. Oppression and bullying is not a color issue, but a human nature issue. What does CRT have to do with building up the intellect and reasoning of our future leaders, who will be black, white, yellow, and brown? I want to see Fort Worth kids educated in what is imaginative, rational, and...
Thank you. Next, we have Armando Cobos. Thank you. Next, we have Armando. Armando will be followed by Portia Jackson, if Portia would make her way down.
Mi nombre es Armando. Soy un residente de Northside. Yo les quiero decir que la teoría crítica de la raza no es la manera para ayudar a los estudiantes. El distrito escolar de Fort Worth está afuera con los estudiantes. Los blancos hoy, en día, no son opresores, y los mexicanos y afroamericanos no están oprimidos. Basta con tus teorías y la política, por favor, enfóquense en los estudiantes. Enfoquen en un plan para ayudar a los estudiantes hispanos y afroamericanos. Do not practice critical race theory anymore. Critical race theory is not the way forward for equity. Get a new superintendent, and please start focusing on our students.
Next, we have Portia Jackson. Portia will be followed by Natalie Weimer. Portia here. Natalie. And then Natalie will be followed by Eva Bonilla.
Okay, wow, this was amazing, in a good and a bad way. First, big thanks to all the teachers that just finished educating our kids for like the most never-ending school year. All this conversation about critical race theory, I don't know how the teachers feel, but I feel like it feels very oppressive if I were a teacher. Like, parents don't believe in our teachers, and I think they're doing an amazing job, especially in this year. And especially since, literally, there is no curriculum in Fort Worth ISD that uses the term "critical race theory." And thank y'all, board members, for your focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion. I know that it's been a hard path, but what you do by focusing on that is providing all of us this wonderful opportunity for all of the families in Fort Worth to come and speak to you and to help you understand how we feel about what you're doing. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Eva Bonilla, and Eva will be followed by Mario Rodriguez, if Mario would make their way down.
Hi, my name is Eva Bonilla, and I've been a volunteer for Fort Worth ISD for like 20 years, and I've worked through Hispanic Women's Network and Monmouth in North Texas, mentoring students, mentoring Latinas. And I do a lot of research on Fort Worth ISD, and I've never seen anything about critical race theory. Where these people got this notion, I don't know, but if they do their research, they find it better. I have two daughters who graduated from Southwest High School. One of them was the school editor, and in 1991, as the editor, she led the way and did away with the rebel flag and replaced it with the Raiders. So, this was happening in 1991. And though the current board has unanimously committed to racial equity for our students, you must continue the work towards justice by creating and fostering learning environments where every student can thrive. Thank you.
Next, we have Mario Rodriguez. Mario will be followed by Norma Garcia Lopez, if Norma would make their way down.
Good evening. Just as I do not expect you to teach my kids religion, I do not expect the Fort Worth School District to teach my kids to judge someone or make assumptions based on someone's skin color. Fort Worth ISD's performance record shows that more emphasis on reading and math need to happen instead. It seems a lot of people in this room don't understand that reading at grade level is not happening. Most kids in Fort Worth schools are black and brown, not white. Yet, 2/3 of 3rd graders can't read at grade level. 2/3 of high school students fail final English and algebra exams. Fort Worth ISD scores last among 20 of the state's largest school districts. Students are not learning. Radical controversial ideologies take up time from learning. Our children's need to read, write, spell, and do the math the way that they breathe air and walk down the street.
Thank you. Next, we have Norma. Norma Garcia Lopez. Norma here? No? Okay. Moving on to Diana Mosley. I'm sorry, Norma is here. Norma, and then so right behind her will be Diana Mosley, and behind Diana will be Angela Price. So, Diana would make her way down.
I'm gonna take off my mask so y'all can see my face. What would Jesus do? Teach racial equity and humanity and not be hypocrites and be diabolical? Y'all sure seem to talk about Jesus a lot. My name is Norma Garcia Lopez, Echando Lores Hidalgo, Guanajuato, Mexico, and I never forget where I come from. I'm not a vendida like some of these people that are talking out against racial equity. My parents taught me to never forget where I come from. I am a racial equity committee member, and I am a community leader as well. I support the equity work. Some of these people are uncomfortable about racial equity, but are not comfortable about being racist. It's evident with their actions. Just like the man sitting behind me screaming Marxism is the same man that complained about the MBK video not coming on by stating, "When is the cotton picking video gonna come on?" That connotation is racist. He's the exact type of bigot. We come back every day, and why we need to continue the racial equity work. White fragility is real.
Time. Thank you. Next, we have Diana Mosley. That's time. Thank you. Next, we have Diana Mosley. Everyone, please. We have Diana next. Order, please. Please. Thank you. Next is Diana Mosley. Diana gonna be followed by Angela Price. Diana here? Angela? Is Angela here? Oscar Sutphen? And Oscar will be followed by Kimon Thomas. So, Oscar first.
The truth. Painful sometimes, though it may be, is still the truth. We did not create American history. You created that history. CRT? CRT did not divide America. You divided America. I did not learn about anybody of any constructive anything until late in my years. I wasn't taught any. What is CRT gonna do that's gonna harm anybody? It's not teaching racism. That's already here.
Thank you. Next, Kimon Thomas. Kimon out here. Next, we have Willett Powell. Willett will be followed by Cassandra Dobbs. Willett? Cassandra Dobbs? Next, we have Caroline Pategnet? Caroline? Okay. Come on down, Caroline. And Caroline will be followed by Ajua Mason, if Ajua would come down.
Good evening. Yesterday, I received an email from Fort Worth ISD. The subject was, "Do you aspire to a society where shared prosperity and equality are the norm?" Yes. So, I continued to read the email, not knowing still what it was about. Well, turns out, the email was about needing bilingual speakers and English speakers to help with the upcoming student registration and resource fair. There was something about that subject header that really bothered me, and I didn't know what it was. What was wrong with just saying, "We need bilingual volunteers"? Why did it have to get twisted to fulfill this narrative? But then I started thinking, you know, if this simple call to get volunteers to help could get twisted, what does this mean for our faculty and students? How much time and energy will teachers be required to rework lessons and reword emails to parents and students?
Thank you. Next, we have Ajua. It's A-J-U-A. If not, we have Sharon Black. I'm sorry. Go ahead, and then will be followed by Sharon Black.
Victimhood mentality, this obsession on race, the focus on two groups, oppressors, the oppressed. I'm hearing words like equality, equity, unity, humanity, but all I'm seeing is this craving for revenge. My truth, hm, what about God's truth? We worship our skin over God. This is straight-up demonic, especially if we're Christians. You want unity? You want the formula to heal? It starts with forgiveness. Because guess what? If we won't learn to forgive on Judgment Day, God won't forgive you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Sharon Black. Sharon will be followed by Lydia Galvan.
Good afternoon. My name is Sharon Hives. They got their last name wrong, but I just want to say that I'm the grandmother of three boys, and they are all of 10 Fort Worth ISD. So, I want to say that the constructive conversations is actually the critical race theory hidden on the cloak. Okay? Critical race theory is a form of hatred and Marxism, and it's teaching our children to focus on race and division and not on opportunities and unity for all. When we teach our children to focus on hate and that one race is an oppressor, then they can't focus on the opportunities that they have in front of them. Basically, they not even being taught how to read and write and spell, so you all need to get off the critical race theory. And you say it's not in the schools, but it's right here. Fort Worth ISD Introduction to Critical Race Theory. And I just want to say, George Washington Carver said, "Fear of something is at the root of hate."
Thank you, Sharon. Next, we have Lydia Galvan. Lydia will be followed by Jackie Walker Ross.
Buenas noches. My name is Lydia Galvan, and I'm here to voice my support for continued racial equity efforts in the district and for the strong leadership of the Board of Trustees. As a Latina, and more specifically, as a Mexican-American woman, I know what it's like to grow up in a district that pretends to be colorblind and that does not value its black and brown students. And I'm able to stand here because of the education that I received outside of that environment that allowed me to be proud of my culture and to be the product of immigrant parents. I know firsthand, and I've experienced the transformational impact that equity-minded programs have and the spaces that they create so that we're able to have conversations about our cultures and our histories and our lived experiences. And it's disheartening to hear so much backlash, so much fear and hatred towards these programs. Our children deserve better. I hope that the district trustees see the value in these programs and continue on their path with humanity and truth as their driving force. Thank you.
Next, we have Jackie Walker Ross. Jackie Walker Ross will be followed by Johanna Hernandez.
Good evening. Frequently, in my journey doing racial equity work, I hear other white people talk about how this work is divisive. I grew up in an almost entirely white school with almost all white teachers, all white neighbors, and all white friends. Looking back at how I grew up with almost exclusively people that looked and thought and acted the same as I did, I've come to realize that that was when my life was the most divided. If anything divides us, it is systemic racism, not the work of racial equity. For me, as a white woman, it is uncomfortable and it is challenging work, but that is because it requires us to recognize that not everyone is okay, that our black and brown neighbors are suffering at the hands of a system that is benefiting people that look like me. Instead of seeing the work as divisive and as the enemy, I encourage those of us in this room to be bold enough to be a community and a school system that sees race and understands the implications of racism throughout our city. Thank you for your work, school board, and please continue your commitment because it is changing lives for the better and building truth, humanity, and unity.
Next, we have Johanna Hernandez. She will be followed by Dr. Jones. We're gonna give, Dr. Coleman, I believe you're gonna translate.
Hello, everyone. I'm Johanna Hernandez, and I am proudly representing my parents, who are immigrants, and all the students who, like me, are first generation in this country. As a student and teacher, I learned how important it is to see yourself reflected through teachers, curriculum, and images in school. I, like many students, questioned, "Where do I fit in this country?" Many times, I felt isolated and confused. Then I learned that that is not the case. Our histories and cultures are entwined, and I am part of the puzzle, as are more than 85% of students in the district who are students of color. This is why it is important to continue to create an environment for our students where they feel loved, seen, cared for, and heard, especially as we try to recover from the devastation of COVID-19. So, Fort Worth ISD, keep moving forward. We are with you in truth, humanity, and unity.
Next, we have Dr. Jones. Dr. Jones will be followed by our final speaker of the night, Sean Lesseter.
Good evening, family. It's wonderful to see each of you. I don't want to talk about national and state politics. What I want to talk about is Fort Worth ISD. In this district in 2017, a team of nine board members made a very courageous call to adopt a racial equity policy. That costs something. I often told people in this district during training that allying yourselves to marginalized people costs something. And as you can see tonight, the cost is even higher than it was in 2017. And so, my question for you is, will you be willing to pay what it costs? Will you be willing to do what it takes to support communities of color? Will you be willing to honor truth, humanity, and unity through your actions tonight and every night to follow, even through the noise? Thank you.
Our final speaker for the evening is Sean Lesseter.
Hi, I'm Sean Lesseter, and I want to be clear. We are not here in response to anti-CRT. We are here to give a counter-narrative of what we've been doing right here in Fort Worth ISD. I have watched groups like these, uninformed groups, show up to school boards and threaten the work. And I'm gonna tell you this. There's an anti-racist, multicultural coalition behind me who's willing to show up every single day because we've been doing the work. We are unafraid of a four-letter-word race. In fact, we have moved past that. We are seeking humanity in everything we do, and it's your job to keep up the work. Many of you board members have benefited from the work, sweat, tears of this coalition behind me. So, I'm saying, do what we ask students to do every day. Defy the odds. Stand up for love and justice. Do it. Do it. Do it. Even when it's hard, even when it hurts.
Thank you. Thank you. I want to, I want to thank you all for sharing your thoughts this evening. Scribner, I want to thank you all for sharing your comments or questions. First up will be, excuse me, trustee Jackson.
Thank you, President Ramos. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Ball.
Excuse me.
MNO is going to be reduced.
Excuse me.
So there are a couple of questions, just to verify this for the public.
Public comment has ended. I want to thank you all for sharing your perspectives this evening. I also wanted to take a quick moment to recognize and acknowledge a trustee who served 29 years
The revenue or dollars that that will decrease our total budget by for MNO?
and who also helped lead this work, Ms.
It'll be a range, I know, because you don't know what the property values will be.
Christine C.C. Moss. Thank you for being here this evening with us. It actually will. It's a great question, trustee Jackson. It actually will not decrease the available revenue because the way the current state With that, our board will continue the business at hand. funding system works, when, when the local tax collections decrease, the state funding increases. So really, what drives funding now is per-student allocation. We will move on to number five, which is the public healing, the, I'm sorry. And so the tax rate versus the state aid is really just determining from whom is that I think at this point, yeah, I think the board would like to take a five-minute recess. money coming? We'll come back at 7:45. Is it coming from local taxpayers or from the state?
Okay. And so that will have no bearing whatsoever on individuals that protest their property taxes. That's not going to change this at all. Because they'll protest and reduce their, their rate, but this will be decided before that happens. Is that correct?
If I'm understanding the question, trustee Jackson, an individual property owner protesting their value, if they're successful in that protest, it certainly would reduce their tax liability. And to the extent that it, that it reduces local tax revenue at the district level, it just brings additional state funding into the district. So it doesn't, that protest doesn't really impact the general fund because of, because of it increases state funding.
Thank you. I just want to get the clarification between local and state funding and that we would still have funding. And obviously, our revenue stream is a tendency, and it's the highest priority.
Right. That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like we have trustee Brookins.
If the board decides to approve the 4% increase, how soon will that go into effect?
It would begin September 1st. That's when our salary year runs, from September 1st to August 31st. Now to trustee Brookin. Okay. Thank you. We will now move to public comment on the 2021-2022 budgets for the General Fund, Debt Service, and Child Nutrition Fund. Our first and only speaker for tonight on this topic is Mr. Stephen Poole.
Good evening, Mr. Ramos, members of the board, and Dr. Scribner. Thank you for allowing me to speak on a very boring topic of the budget for the school district. I'm Stephen Poole, Executive Director of UEA, and our association wholeheartedly supports the proposal of 4% raise for employees. It's appropriate, it's needed, and it's what we promised the voters the past fall when they...
Recess, and we're going to call the public hearing to order. Dr.
Dr. Scribner, are you and your team ready for the budget public hearing?
Yes, thank you very much, President Ramos. At this time, we would like to begin our public hearing with regard to the 2021-22 budget and general fund, debt service, and child nutrition fund. And I'd like to turn it over to our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Michael Ball.
Thank you, Dr. Scribner, President Ramos, members of the board. We've got a real brief presentation to just try to catch us up a little bit on some things that were somewhat uncertain in the last month when we talked about the budget. We want to kind of clear out the fact that, or restate the fact, that the budget that's proposed for adoption tonight was developed prior to us being made aware that we would have some significant federal dollars coming our way. And because of the publication deadlines and just the timelines involved in what we have to do in terms of public notices, the budget that we have before the board tonight does not reflect any of these funds, the ESER III funds, which we became aware of on April 28th, and the ESER II funds, which we were made aware of on June the 4th. And so, all that's to say that there will be some significant budget amendments forthcoming at a future meeting. And you'll see later in tonight's meeting, the presentation on the plans to utilize some of these federal funds. And so, we also wanted to clear up a couple of things that, in the legislative session at the state level, that were uncertain in late May when we met and last discussed the budget. And that is, we weren't sure at that time whether there would be any funding for virtual instruction. We now know that there will not be. And so, that matter is settled. Also, there was some uncertainty about whether or not the state was going to require districts to hold back or reserve a certain amount of the funding for use after the federal eligibility period concludes. And we're happy to report that that provision did not make it in the final bill. So those two items, we now know the answer to. They were uncertain last time we discussed this. And this again is the, just shows you the $261.5 million allocation from the ESER III funding. The ESER II funding is still sort of in the estimate stage because the state does plan to supplant some of that. And they've announced publicly that they will reduce each district's allocation by the amount of hold harmless funding for the 2021 school year. And that won't be known really until all the summer P E M submissions take place. But you'll see, and I think one of the later presentations, we're currently estimating that number to be about $60 million. And then we want to talk a little bit about the timeline, just to remind the board that the fiscal year does begin on July 1st, and state law does require that we have a budget in place prior to the beginning of the new fiscal year. And we did, we have met all the compliance requirements for the board to adopt the budget. We did publish the required notice on June the 9th. And so, the path is clear if the board is so inclined to adopt the budget. Here's actually the budget that you see in a much bigger format in your packet in the board book. But these are the same numbers that the board saw at the last meeting, so I won't waste any time going over those unless the board would like to. And the good news is, out of this, that we are proposing that the tax rate will be reduced by three tenths of a cent. And that is a statewide reduction based on statute. And it could go lower depending on what happens with our local values. And we'll get those numbers on the 25th of July. And we're happy to report that we'll be recommending that the interest in sinking fund tax rate will remain unchanged. And that will come before the board at the August meeting. We'll make a recommendation based on what those property values turn out to be at the August. But we do know that it will be a reduction from its current rate. Further good news is that we built this budget beginning in January, before we knew that we would have significant federal money coming into the district. We built this budget on the assumption that there would be a 2% across-the-board compensation increase. And we have built those numbers into the budget that's before the board tonight. There is a separate item, as you know, on tonight's agenda where we're recommending a 4% across-the-board compensation increase based on the greater of 4% of the midpoint or the actual salary of an employee. And of course, if the board chooses to approve that item, there will be a budget amendment forthcoming at a future meeting in order to provide for that. And so, the next steps are that certainly it's the superintendent's recommendation that the board adopt this budget tonight, and that will facilitate continuity of our operations. Literally, we couldn't write a check for payroll or anything else after July 1st if we don't have a budget approved by the board. And as we solidify the ESER III and ESER II learning recovery plans and associated funding utilization, we will present some significant amendments to the budgets at that time. And so, that concludes the presentation. President Ramos, and certainly be happy to address any questions the board might have. It is our recommendation that this item be adopted.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Scribner and Mr. Ball. Looks like we have comments or questions. First up will be, excuse me, Trustee Jackson.
Thank you, President Ramos. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Ball. MNO is going to be reduced. So there are a couple of questions, just to verify this for the public. The revenue or dollars that that will decrease our total budget by for MNO? It'll be a range, I know, because you don't know what the property values will be.
It actually will, it's a great question, Trustee Jackson. It actually will not decrease the available revenue because the way the current state funding system works, when the local tax collections decrease, the state funding increases. So really, what drives funding now is per student allocation. And so, the tax rate versus the state aid is really just determining from whom is that money coming? Is it coming from local taxpayers or from the state?
Okay. And so, that will have no bearing whatsoever on individuals that protest their property taxes. That's not going to change this at all. Because they'll protest or reduce their rate, but this will be decided before that happens. Is that correct?
If I'm understanding the question, Trustee Jackson, an individual property owner protesting their value, if they're successful in that protest, it certainly would reduce their tax liability. And to the extent that it reduces local tax revenue at the district level, it just brings additional state funding into the district. So that protest doesn't really impact the general fund because it increases state funding.
Thank you. I just want to get the clarification between local and state funding, and that we would still have funding. And obviously, our revenue stream is a tendency, and it's the highest priority.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like we have Trustee Brookins.
If the board decides to approve the 4% increase, how soon will that go into effect?
It would begin September 1st. That's when our salary year runs, from September 1st to August 31st.
Now, that Trustee Brookin?
Okay. Thank you. We will now move to public comment on the 2021-2022 budgets for the general fund, debt service fund, and child nutrition fund. Our first and only speaker for tonight on this topic is Mr. Stephen Poole.
Good evening, Mr. Ramos, members of the board, and Dr. Scribner. Thank you for allowing me to speak on a very boring topic of the budget for the school district. I'm Stephen Poole, Executive Director of UEA. And our association wholeheartedly supports the proposal of 4% raise for employees. It's appropriate, it's needed, and it's what we promised the voters the past fall when they voted for a tax increase. It's appropriate because our educators and our staff this year has faced a school district like our superintendent says, like none of them. And they've handled it with grace and have worked very hard in trying circumstances. It's appropriate because it's going to be difficult to attract folks into the profession, much less Fort Worth ISD. Private sector employers are increasing their pay. I saw Nebraska furniture marters paying their warehouse folks anywhere from $18 to $23 an hour. And Bank of America is raising their minimum wages to $25 an hour. So some of our talented employees may look to the private sector. And folks considering education jobs may do the same. So it's appropriate because we need to attract the best and brightest into Fort Worth ISD and retain our hard-working, quality employees, teachers, cafeteria, teaching assistants, bus drivers, maintenance, and everyone who works on the benefit of the students every single day in the most trying circumstances. So that's why I'm here speaking tonight in support of the 4%. It's absolutely needed, and I appreciate all of your hard work on this budget. Dr. Scribner's and his team worked on the budget. And I appreciate our working relationship we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing your thoughts. This public hearing is now closed. We will move on to action item number seven. It is the item to approve adoption of the proposed 2021-2022 budgets for the general fund, debt service fund, and child nutrition fund. Looking for a motion to approve that. I don't know if our screens are working, staff. Because I want to make sure that these are going to work for the rest of the night. So we'll be a little patient, staff. I'll lean on your.
Okay, I'll proceed with that. We have a motion by Trustee Jackson to approve as presented. Do I have a second? A second by Dr. Ryan. Oh, now it's working, okay. So we have a motion by Trustee Jackson to approve the motion. We have a second by Dr. Ryan. Any discussion on this topic? Looks like none of my colleagues have discussion. I'll have one. I've had the privilege to be able to be trained at T E A extensively on governance, also being currently trained by the Council of Great City Schools. And as it relates to this topic, I've learned a great deal on how our board can do better moving forward on aligning the budget with the goals and the constraints. And so, we have been deep in that work as a board before. We've got two new colleagues that will be engaging with us on that work, and I look forward to next year's budget process where we can have that dialogue of how our budget is going to enhance the board goals and the board constraints. So a lot of work from us as a board to be done, and we'll do that in collaboration with you as staff is the ideal situation. So that's all my comments. We will move to vote. Everyone in favor? I'm sorry, please vote. Missing one person. There we go. Motion passes nine, four, and zero against. Thank you. We will now move on to reports and presentations. First one is the Notice of Compliance with Board Member Training Requirements. Under State Board of Education Rule, completing required continuing education each year of service is a basic obligation and expectations of any sitting board member. Per Board Policy BBD Legal, as Board President, I am required to announce the name of each member who has completed the required continuing education, has exceeded the required continuing education, and is deficient in meeting and required continuing education. The requirements for training are measured as of the first anniversary of the date of the trustee's election or appointment, or two-year anniversary of his or her previous training is applicable. There are seven training areas for board member continuing education. I'll also note that Texas was one of the first ones, if not the first one, to require board training in the country. So other states have followed us since then. One is local district orientation. Two is orientation to the Texas Education Code. Three is post-legislative update to the Texas Education Code. Four is team building. Five, additional continuing education. Six, evaluating student academic performance and setting goals. And number seven, identifying and reporting abuse, trafficking, and other maltreatment of children. The following board members have completed or are registered to complete the required trainings by June 26, 2021. I'll note that this board will more likely be at Tasby S O I this week here in Fort Worth, which I think began today or, no, tomorrow. So the following board members have completed or registered to complete by June 26. Myself, Jacinto Ramos Jr., Toby Jackson, Quentin Phillips, Daphne Brookins, C J Evans, and Dar, Anaya Luvenos. And obviously, our two newest colleagues will have time. So you'll be there with us soon. The following board members have exceeded the required number of training hours. That is Jacinto Ramos Jr., myself, Quentin Phillips, C J Evans, and Ann Dar. That concludes that report. We will move on to B, which is Dr. Scribner. We're going to look to you to see if you and your team are ready for the Student Learning Recovery Plan presentation.
Thank you very much, President Ramos and members of the board. We are very excited to present to our community our Student Learning Recovery Plan utilizing the American Rescue Plan Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief, the ESER III funds, and other resources. As you'll know, we've all gone through a tremendously challenging year like no other. And we understand that despite the fact that immediately prior to the pandemic, we had very encouraging student achievement scores in our middle-of-the-year assessments in the 1920 school year. We, like all other districts, particularly urban districts, really struggled through the pandemic, and as did the state of Texas when we look at the learning loss of time. So this will be a year of recovery, but it will also be a year to reset and do some things different. We've been blessed with the investment from the federal government so that we can really focus on improving student outcomes, extending student opportunities, and enhancing what we're doing, not remediating students, but accelerating students. And with that, I'll turn it over to our Deputy Superintendent, Karen Mullinart, who will begin the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Scribner. So we're really excited this evening to come before you and share our plans for ESER funding. We want to set first some background. We love acronyms in Texas. So ESER, we want to kind of explain first, what is ESER? So ESER is about our Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief funding. This is federal funding that we have received from the government for our K through 12 schools. It will be provided to our districts. It's emergency funding, and it is solely to address the impact of COVID-19 on our schools and our students, and our teachers as well. You'll see that we have over $12 billion allocated to our school districts in Texas. And Fort Worth ISD is very lucky to receive over $260 million of that funding. Of course, with federal dollars, there's always requirements to spend that money. And we will, of course, comply with those requirements. We want to share just briefly, we had to get stakeholder input. That we'll go over in just a minute. We have to have a plan for a safe return back to school that we will be posting later this week to get impact on as well. And then, of course, we have our normal rules and regulations when we're dealing with federal money to, if we're doing any proposals, we have to get three quotes and other requirements, especially around our financial support effort and equity requirements with the funding. How can those funds be used? Well, they're designated for a one-time use, short-term spending. It's over three years, four summers, so we will be utilizing some of the funding for our summer school launch that starts tomorrow. Over 14,000 students enrolled in our summer launch that starts tomorrow. Sorry, I had to put that plug in. So some of our ESER funding will be spent on our summer launch. It's also recommended that when we're utilizing these funds, that we remember it's a one-time, short-term type of expenses. So anything that we put in place, we need to have a sustainability plan as well. If it's something we need to continue, then of course, we're going to have to look at our general funds after year three. Here's just a timeline looking back. We received the news from T E A that we were going to receive the ESER funding on April the 28th. And then, Fast and Furious, we need to make sure we're in compliance to be able to submit our application for the grant by July. Here you'll see detailed, we had multiple stakeholder groups where we shared what, of course, ESER funding is, as well as getting feedback. You'll see some internal as well as external. We also worked with our partner, our UEA partners, too. They did their own survey. They shared their survey results with us as well. You also, some of our board trustees participated in many sessions, as well as our town halls and English and Spanish principals, DIRC, DAC, and our Racial Equity Committee, as well as our Special Ed PTA. We did put out an ESER survey. I want to share some of those results with you today. The first one, to me, the most important one, is what did our students tell us? When we developed the survey, we made sure that the survey was around our student voice, and our student survey looked different than our stakeholder survey. We wanted to make sure we heard what do they think they need coming back. You'll see here at the top of our responses, they want high-quality instruction, they want to continue with technology, they know they need help with reading and math. That came out loud and clear. Now, what did our students not want? No, as a surprise, most of us are parents here of students. They did not want summer learning opportunities, and they do not want extra time at school. However, you know, we are the adults, so. Our open-ended responses trends, they really want to be back in person. They want to be back with their friends, they want to be back with their teachers, they want to socialize. But they know coming back, that they're going to need more tutoring, more one-on-one support, they're going to need mental health and stress. We really paid attention to the survey when we were told that our students are struggling. They know they need help coming back. We automatically were able to let our counselors know as well, this survey and others. So we need to prepare for that, and you'll see that in our upcoming plans that we're going to share. And of course, they were very vocal about not wanting extended time and summer learning as well. Our parents also, we have a designated group from our parents. You'll see that they as well, they want effective instruction, instructional materials, as well as our facility improvements. And then instructional support staff. They know their students are going to need to recover from this learning loss. Our parents also shared with us, you'll see, that what they were not necessarily in favor of was extended instructional time and summer learning opportunities. However, with 14,000 students registered for summer launch, we felt confident that we're going to meet the needs, and our parents know we were given that opportunity for our students. Their open-ended trends are very similar. They want in-person instruction, they want to come back as well. But they are asking that we look at how can we make smaller class sizes and provide that one-on-one support. And they also want mental health and S E L resources, social-emotional learning resources for our students. Then, of course, our teachers, you know, our most important stakeholder next to our students. They want additional support as well in the classrooms and on the campuses. They want to help engage our families back. And then, they want to provide wraparound services. Wraparound services are very similar to social-emotional services. It can mean mental health, it can mean physical health, it can mean any type of resource that we can provide. It can go from clothing to food. These are all the resources that we're prepared to offer to our families when needed. And also, the teacher open-ended responses, smaller class sizes, the one-on-one support, more staff to help academically and emotionally, as well as the family engagement. So moving forward, our timeline, you'll see here, June 22nd, that is this evening. And we are here sharing with you our board presentation. And you'll see where we now have some next steps. Later this week, we'll be posting our safe-to-in-person, return-to-in-person. On our website, we'll ask our public, our teachers, our students, to give us feedback on our in-person back-to-school plan through our Let's Talk process. We'll post our grant and when the grants due. And then, August 16th, we're opening our doors for in-person instruction. So we cannot wait to welcome our students back. Returning students, students we haven't seen since 2019 when we shut the doors due to COVID. But then also, our brand-new students with our pre-K who will be entering our campuses. And then, one of the two pieces you'll see here in January 2022, as well as July 22, one of the requirements for ESER is that we are very transparent about our plan. Is it working? What is working, what's not working? What's our return of investment in that? What's our data showing us? So you'll see, we've already designated that we will be coming back to you, the board, as well as the public in multiple different platforms, to share with you how is our plan being implemented, as well as if we're receiving the results. This type of funding is something we'll probably never see again. We need to make sure we're utilizing it correctly. And if we're implementing it, and if it's not working for our students, and if it's not working for our teachers and our principals, then we need to discontinue that. So we will be very transparent coming back to you in January and July with those findings. We've been working with T E A. There's certain buckets. You'll notice here, when you add up the amounts, it does not equal to the total $261 million because we really don't, we don't know exactly everything our students are going to need when they return. We want to make sure we're leaving some funding, so when they do return in August, and we have time to look at what needs, assessments they need, that we have other money that we can implement. We may need to add to some of our current plans, or we may need to have a plan that we haven't even thought of yet. But so, you'll see, it does not equal up to the total amount. However, our main buckets are support teachers, rigorous instructional materials, create more time for learning, empower our parents, and of course, our blended instruction as well. Right here, you'll see just a pie chart where we have our planned spending. And you'll see that right now, we're sitting with close to $10 million. That does not include our ESER II funding that we still have on the table to meet our additional needs. Partners, that includes our Leadership Academy Network, our Texas Wesleyan Partnership. We do allocate funds to them as well under the ESER planning, as well as Jack A. Middle School with Failon Academy. And then, direct costs are outlined through T E A for us. Here's just a funding overview in our large buckets that I shared with you earlier, gives you a little bit more how it's broken down. And those will be very fluid. As you'll see, facilities and infrastructure is still to be determined. We are working to really take stock of what we need to do, not only with air quality, other facility, infrastructure needed for our campuses for that safe return back. But then you'll see where we're really focusing on how can we support our teachers, as well as empowering our parents and families. So the next part we're going to share, you're not going to see all of our plans because it would take probably another eight hours for us to go in detail. But we have tonight highlighted some of our plans that we would like to share with you and how they'll be implemented.
So trustees, this evening, as Mrs. Mullinart just shared, we would like to go in more depth with you with some of our funding priorities. The first category that we would like to share with you this evening is centered around reducing our class sizes. As you saw results from our survey earlier, you heard not only our students, but our parents and our teachers telling us that smaller class sizes, reducing our class size was something that we needed to investigate. What we don't want to do is just reduce class sizes for the sake of reducing class sizes. We need to be strategic about what's happening. We need to make sure that we're putting supports in place that really provide an opportunity for us to move our education program forward, but also support our teachers so they can be targeted with the work that they're doing with our students, and so that smaller class sizes really are beneficial. You'll see on the slide here, five different strategies that we're going to be looking at. I'll go through each one of them real quick, and we'll target in on a couple of those to give you a little more detail. First of all, at the elementary level, and I will preface that these strategies will impact all three levels, elementary, middle, and high school. First, at the elementary level, we're looking to eliminate elementary bridge classrooms. Now, some of you may say, okay, what is an elementary bridge classroom? As we look at enrollment, projecting enrollment for the next year, some schools have student enrollment that does not allow us to create a full class of students at a particular grade level. So sometimes, a teacher's assignment for the next year may be 10 students in the second grade. grade and 10 students in the third grade, and that teacher is responsible for teaching a bridged classroom, teaching students both in second grade and third grade. One of the things that we know is that is not an ideal environment for students to learn, and definitely not an ideal environment for our teachers in which to teach. This strategy right here will put additional FTEs, so that we eliminate all of those bridge classrooms in our elementary schools. The second strategy that we share with you will be to reduce elementary classrooms that are out of compliance. I believe we all know that the state of Texas has a requirement in kindergarten through fourth grade, that there is no larger than a 22-to-1 student-teacher ratio unless there is an appeal made to the state. We have had some of those classrooms in the past. Adding FTEs back will give us the opportunity next year to ensure we have no classrooms over the 22-to-1 student-teacher ratio. At the middle school level, we're looking at adding additional FTEs, additional teachers, to support our students that are, our lower-performing students in literacy and math. Students that have, have resulted, whose test results have shown us they're performing in the 15th to 25th percentile on their end-of-year map reading and math assessments. And give us the ability to enroll these students in a double-blocked structured literacy or enhanced math class. A class that will give students an opportunity not only to receive their core instruction, but also an opportunity to receive intervention and additional support in math and foundational reading. We're also looking at putting positions back into our visual and performing arts area. We know we have a number of programs that we want to continue to support across this district. And being able to keep teachers in those places, put teachers back in those programs, will allow us not only to continue the programs, but to look at growing those programs in the pyramid design, so that we can, we can continue to support those opportunities for our, for our students. And then finally, looking at other teacher positions that support classroom needs, other ways that we can reduce class sizes, putting positions back, bringing teachers off of the surplus list that our projections for next year may have said, it doesn't necessarily equate to the ratios we were looking at. But knowing putting these positions, positions back will give us an opportunity to reduce class sizes. If we can, I'll take the first example of eliminating our elementary bridge classrooms. As you will see, these numbers for 21, 22 are based off of projected enrollment and staffing that appropriately responds to that enrollment. What our numbers told us, as we looked at projections, is there would be 58 classrooms across the district that would need to be in a bridged environment, teachers that would be teaching to, to grade levels. The addition of ESSR dollars gave us the ability to eliminate all 58 of those classroom environments. We'll go through, and you will see that this is, that this, this impacts all of our schools across the entire district. But I will show you how we really are targeted in our school performance framework, with making sure we are investing in the schools that need the greatest help, our schools that are in our lowest tiers of performance. Here in Region 1, you will see that we, we increased 11 teaching, teaching units. You will see that the majority of these, these classrooms are in schools that are rated as either Tier 3 or Tier 4. In Region 2, 17 classrooms will be, 17 teachers will be added to eliminate bridge classrooms, seeing here once again that the majority of these schools are Tier 3 campuses and able to add additional teachers to reduce class size. Region 3, we put 16 FTEs back into Region 3, where you will see the majority of our schools are Tier 3 and Tier 4 campuses. And then finally, in Region 4, Tier 3 and Tier 4 campuses are receiving additional FTEs to reduce class size and eliminate our bridged environment. At the middle school level, we'll talk a little bit more about our structured literacy and enhanced math program. We put additional literacy and math teaching units at all of our, all of our middle school campuses, targeted for 6th and 7th grade, literacy and math instruction both. This gave certified teachers in these two content areas for the opportunity to create more seats for that double-blocked intervention program. Same teacher will be teaching students for two class periods. One class will be the traditional grade-level curriculum, the grade-level course. And then a second course gives them the ability to implement some district-wide interventions that we have in place, that this year our data is showing us results that have been very positive in our end-of-year results. We'll be looking forward to bringing some of that data to you in the very near future. As Ms. Mullenar shared earlier, all of our plans do come with a progress monitoring plan. We are looking at how, how is the implemented resource going to pay off for our students? We are looking at two different ways to measure the impact of reduced class size for our teachers and our students. And first and foremost, we want to hear from our teachers and students. Using our Panorama survey, from beginning of year to middle of year, we will be talking to our students and teachers and asking them, how did smaller class sizes work? How did investing more teachers in these particular areas really pay off for the experience you're having in the classroom and your ability to engage in instruction? We don't just want to hear from them, we also want to look at the data, we want to look at the performance of our students. So you'll see, we'll also be looking at our beginning-of-year-to-middle-of-year map results, both in literacy and math. How many of our students are meeting their growth goals in both English and Spanish? And how many of our students are getting the level of performance that we're looking for, and how did that pay off with smaller class sizes? I want to share one of our strategies for the high school level. This is a strategy we are very excited about next year, really changes the focus that we have on our, our students, and really addresses our high school students as they first enter their high school career. We call this the freshman, the high school freshman success team approach. We are working with a, a, a top provider nationally. We are working with the Network for College Success in collaboration with our principals, our student school support teams, and our academic teams, to really look at strategies of how we know every student when they enter our high school, and how we have an adult that takes an interest in students and makes sure that we support that student, starting their freshman year, to stay on track, to earn their credits, to be ready to graduate on time, and stays with that student their entire four years in high school. As you'll see, you'll hear us talk about students being on track. Our definition of on track is that in the freshman year, in the, in the freshman year students are enrolled, they've earned at least six credits, that our students have not failed more than one semester in one of their core courses, and that we don't have students that are having to repeat ninth grade. We have students that are progressing from ninth grade and moving on to their sophomore year. That will be our measurement for keeping students on track. What we're, what we're pleased with and what we're fortunate about with ESSR funding is that we're going to be able to put a freshman success coach on each of our high school campuses, an individual that will support our teachers and our administrators to really look at what's happening with our freshmen staying on track. What are we doing to provide those resources not only to our students, but also to our teachers in the classroom? The freshman success coach will focus on that transition period. We know that one of the toughest transitions of a student's career is leaving middle school at the eighth-grade level and enrolling in high school. So how do we make sure that we put our arms around those students and make sure that they know how to transition well into the high school environment? How are we looking at course performance, including credit recovery if the need may be there? Students that may not be connected or may not be engaging, or how do we recapture some academic credit if there's failures that a student experiences? And then also, how do we work with the student to set goals for themselves? To recognize that this isn't just a one-year approach, this is a four-year strategy, and this is a strategy looking at what comes next after high school, and really preparing that college and career readiness approach, and really having the mentality of, let's really dig into what the opportunities are for all students in Fort Worth ISD. With this strategy, as we shared, we also have a progress measure that we will be looking at. We will be looking at this on a six, six-month basis. So as we shared earlier in January, we will come back to you, looking at our freshman success teams, looking at next year's freshmen, saying how many of our students were staying on track in this first semester? Our definition of students staying on track at the first semester will be that we don't have students who have failed more than one of their core courses at the semester. We shared a little bit of data here with you, what our, what our, our middle-of-year freshman success looked like in 2019, 2020, and then what it looked like this past year with virtual and COVID being a part of our environment. I will share with you, our expectation and our goal is not just to improve where we were in 2020, 2021, that 41%, but actually to see a reduction and fewer students that are failing a course, more, one course or more, see improvement from where we were in 2019, 2020. I'm going to pass it on to Dr. Washington now.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. We are extremely excited about our freshman success teams. But while we are tracking freshman success, we also have realized the impact of the pandemic on our specifically secondary students, grade seven through 12. And we've utilized our district's early warning system to identify students that are at risk of being behind their cohort and their peers. Specifically, the early warning system tracks data in students' grades, our credits, attendance, discipline, and end-of-course exams. So we've utilized this system to identify Tier 3 students, or students that are at risk of becoming behind in their peers. So utilizing this system, we have decided to put credit recovery teams on every campus at our high schools and our middle school levels, and not just at our high schools, but a team for every grade levels. We have the freshman success team, but we'll also have a credit recovery team for grades 10, 11, and 12. We'll also put a credit recovery team in place for our middle schools. And our credit recovery teams will consist of four core teachers that will help support students in their core subjects, as well as the administrator that will lead the team. One of the things we'll do is ensure that the teams monitor the data that are, that's in our early warning system, such as grades and attendance, every three weeks and six weeks. The three weeks gives us an opportunity to be able to determine if kids are off-track and intervene before the end of the six weeks. As well as the six weeks gives us an opportunity to monitor that data, so that we are making sure students are earning credit, and they're not losing or failing at the semester. We will utilize the district's early warning system in order to be able to gauge our success. And every team will utilize their cohort data from the early warning system, and we should have that finalized as teachers are finalizing grades this week. We'll use this data to ensure that we're identifying the correct students. We'll also use this data to provide individualized plans, to provide SEO supports, to also divide, provide resources just to meet the basic needs of our students using our family resource centers. And then, once we've had this in place, the progress monitoring goal for this, we'll be able to look at each one of those indicators in the early warning system, and ensure that our students, we are decreasing the number of students that are in, that are targeted at risk for becoming off, off-grade level with their peers. And then I believe Mr. Dr. Penya will share our family engagement plan.
Thank you, Dr. Washington. We, we start with high-quality family engagement. So let's talk about the premise and the three factors guiding that work. Number one, we're focused on student learning and achievement as our students return back to in-person instruction. Also, family well-being. We know that our students have, as Ms. Mullenar shared, been away from us for quite some time. And also, also the continuous learning development of not just the students, but also the family and educators that serve them. So what is the plan? Well, the plan is to hire full-time family engagement specialists at all elementary and middle schools, which currently we have half-time specialists at certain schools, but not all. So this would make sure that every elementary school, when we came to your last board meeting, I shared a plan where we had provided support to only tier four and five schools. Using the ESSR funding, we would be able to provide that at every school, to make sure that we have equitable support at all of our schools. That would be the addition of 107 FTEs. And we know that with implementing this large initiative, there needs to be accountability to the implementation process, and that starts with training. As you can see on this slide, we, our focus will be attendance monitoring. We will make sure that we are monitoring attendance. And here in, in the next slide, I will talk about what that looks like. Also, providing training on customer support, volunteer management, social media management, social emotional learning supporting, crisis intervention, and parent advocacy, as, as they will be the first person that many parents will see and students will see as they come back to school. Ms. Mullenar also shared wraparound services, and that is the collective work of multiple teams to support the mental well-being of our students as they return back to in-person. And so I'll take the next few slides to talk about a variety of services that will support students as they come back to in-person instruction. But before I do that, I'd like to talk about, how will we measure this, the work of the family engagement specialist to make sure that it's working? Well, number one, we'll start off with some qualitative data. A survey administered every six weeks to our family engagement specialists to gauge their proficiency and inform, inform us whether we're on the right track in terms of the development and training opportunities they need. The, the training that I shared with you earlier will be an ongoing training to all the specialists. And most important, the quantitative, the, the performance metrics, the critical data points. I was excited to play around with a dashboard last week, and it is ready to launch. You're able to look at pyramid data, school data, the service provided to the student, and actually drill down even to the student level. And so when we have these systems working, we'll be able to track attendance, not just by pyramid or campus, but at the individual student level. Also, the social emotional learning support referrals, whether it went to a counselor or an external telehealth provider, of the many that we have. And also be able to contact students by race or ethnicity, and also look at their average attendance rate by student, if need be. And these are all data reports that can be created in real time. So what are some of these wraparound services? Well, the first, the first one is adding 10 positions as restorative practice, practice specialists for each pyramid. And we know that the work of, of having pyramids in our district is, has been increasing and very well-valued, as you're seeing the streamline of services. So this is a strategic approach to support schools as they, as students return with SEL. We will make sure that our specialists are trained in terms of mentoring and re-engaging our kids with relationship-building strategies as they come back to interact with their peers and their friends back at the school site. Another piece is our after-school program. Department has been working to increase the addition of 15 additional sites, to ensure that we have youth development, academic enrichment, homework help, fine art support, service learning, and technology tools and skills to be there, because we know that many of our students need a place to stay after school, and we will be highly needed as they come back, and many of their parents are starting to go back to work. Another service is, we have an RFP process that is open to community partners, such as communities and schools, Clayton that we still currently work with. And we're targeting 72 campuses to include services such as additional counseling and case management. We know that we will have a higher volume of students in need, mental health and wellness and family resources. And as we work with these external providers, we will make sure that we have a return of investment as we contract services with them, as they, as we determine which ones best meet the needs of our students in our district.
Thank you, Dr. Penya. I get to talk about a few more initiatives that will also support our, our students that need extra support. The, the first opportunity is one of extended learning and support through high-dose tutoring. So what is that? That, that is targeted individualized tutoring for elementary and middle school students outside the school day, using contracted services. So why contracted services? Well, for one, it allows our teachers to focus on their tier-one instruction during the school day. I'm sure there will still be some providing support after school, but this, this will allow us to partner with quality folks that will, they want to come in and support our efforts as well. We will look for multiple partners. Why? We have to serve 107 schools. We have to go find those quality partners, and we want to make sure those partners serve our students not only in English, but also in Spanish. Transportation will be provided for our students. And another side benefit of launching an RFP and having contracted services is that we're able to set metrics, we're able to monitor progress. And if it's not working, like Ms. Mullenar suggested, then we'll change our strategy, and we'll use a different strategy as well. But high-dosis tutoring is one of those strategies that we want to make sure we provide our schools. Within our Special Education Services Department, we want to provide a few positions in several key areas. Special education instructional specialists, we have, with that six FTEs, we want to provide support in dyslexia, reading intervention teachers. Currently, we support our campuses with either a half or a full-time unit for dyslexia support. With this effort, every single campus will have a full-time dyslexia teacher. And this will allow us to provide those supports to, to our campuses in our district. In addition, we want to provide teacher assistance for specialized classrooms, and also create five teams for regional multidisciplinary support. What that means is that every single one of our pyramids, in addition to our specialized schools, will have a MTSS team. And that will be consistent of five members, school, a school psychologist, speech-language pathologist, diagnostician, social worker, and an MTSS specialist. This will allow those teams to provide support when our campus teams may be overloaded, or they'll be able to provide expertise to our campus teams when needed. In addition to this, we also want to provide a tablet, tablet-based testing system. This will allow us to expedite the evaluation of our students, so we can get on-time services to them, and we don't have to wait on paper and paper testing for us to do that. In addition, a little side benefit of, of our COVID response, we learned, we learned a lot about using tools that will support our students on time, not just our special education students, but all students. In this case, learning tools for academic and social skills at grade levels. These are tools that are portable, that students can have with them at all times. And once again, we learned And once again, we learned about this through some of our use of Google in our classrooms during our COVID response, and we want to continue that effort. There you go. The next initiative is strengthening our teacher pipeline. We cannot do the work we're talking about without our teachers, and we need more of them. And so if you're watching, sign up. We're hiring right now. And so, one of those initiatives is our university teacher residency program. We are going to partner this year with Tarleton State, coming up with 31 college students, college seniors. They'll be placed with our best teachers in our district. And that's just the beginning. 31 pre-service teachers, not all totally certified teachers, pre-service teachers from Tarleton State that will work in our schools side by side with our teachers. And the goal, of course, is to keep them the next year. Okay? We want to extend this effort and this pipeline through our kinder teacher assistant program. This has been a position that traditionally we have openings throughout the year, and even in the end of the year, these are hard to fill. So what should we do? Well, let's go to our university partners. They have a lot of students in the education programs that want to work. They want to fund their education. Let's put them in the pipeline now, and let's make sure we hire them as part-time teacher assistants so they can still go to school. And then, let's put them in that education program that become our residents, bring them in residence, and once again, bring them to our schools. And then, of course, we have the early childhood education credential for pre-K and teacher assistance. Those same teacher assistants that are working for us now, I bet you a lot of them want to become teachers. Let's provide a pathway for them to do it. They know our kids, they work with our kids. Let's make them our teachers and put them through, work with our partners and university partners as well. Another learning acceleration program and support is what we're calling Saturday Learning Quest. This is an opportunity for our students to add 14 additional instructional days. This will be targeted support for grade students in first grade, second grade, and third grade, for those in the lowest quartile for math and literacy performance. This won't be your typical Saturday school, as you have heard. We want to make sure our students are with our strongest teachers. We want to make sure we target our teachers that have been growing our students and provide a stipend and compensation for them to commit to these 14 additional Saturdays. We want that commitment for consistency. So it's not like you came to one Saturday. No, it's 14 additional instructional days. In addition to that, not only will they be served academically, but we will make sure that they have social and emotional learning and enrichment. One of the ideas that we will have is, if you haven't seen our STEM trailers, we invite you to come out to one of our campuses. They will be a frequent visitor to our Saturday Learning Quest, in addition to building our fine arts programming along the way. Our students pick fine arts or pick enrichment programs when they learn about them at an early age, and this is the best way to do it. In addition to that, we want to follow that out with parent education. Also, make sure we provide incentives to our students. It is Saturday after all. We want to provide transportation, of course, food service during that time. But most importantly, we want to monitor progress for our students. Every single one of these initiatives has a progress measure. Student success is number one. We want to make sure we're paying attention to that.
The final slide we want to share with you is about classroom supplies. And this is really for our students and for our parents. We want to take advantage of this funding. We have school supply lists for our elementary campuses, and the district will be supplying school supplies for all of our elementary students. So you will not see the school supply list handed out this year, because this funding needs to go back, and we're going to take care of that for our parents. So our elementary campuses will be receiving all of those school supplies. Secondary is a little different. Those of you who live in the secondary world, their courses have different needs, and they have different syllabus that they require. Three-ring binders, some don't like that, some want a journal. So we want to make sure we're meeting the needs of our teachers for our secondary campuses. So we will be providing $200 per teacher to make sure that they have those supplies for their secondary students. Really excited about this, because to us, this touches not only our students or teachers, but more importantly, our parents as well. That really concludes us for this evening. We have lots of other plans, but we wanted to highlight these, but we're welcome to any questions at this time.
Okay, it looks like we've got questions or comments from the board, or we're going to begin with Trustee Jackson.
Thank you, President Ramos. You guys, great presentation. I love what you all proposed and where we're going, but I need to understand what informs your logic model and what informs the decisions. We had 1,651 responses on the student questionnaire. What was your goal for that?
So, our goal is always more, to increase. You know, we promoted it not only through the campuses, but also, I'm sure many of you are parents, received multiple text messages, callouts, emails. We even presented at a prior board meeting, asking our parents not only to fill it out, but sit down with their students to fill out. You know, I think our culture here is that we do not do well at student voice. And if we don't promote that we're listening to them and we're making the changes, if those 1,600, they know we listen to them and they see it, then it's going to start catching on. So you know what? That's our fault. That's our fault for the past. We have to show them, I listened to you, we showed it, and now we're putting it in place. So when we come back in July, January and July, you know, we're going to have other surveys. We need our students to believe in us, too, that we're listening to them. So we're going to work harder on that.
No, I love it. You know, I have a student, she doesn't always fill hers out either, I'm sorry to say. And she reminds me to fill mine out, so, you know. Not a criticism at all, it's just hard to get that data, and we do so need it, so I appreciate your insight. We're spending $218.5 million, it's about 92%. What made you guys hold back the $43 million? How did you know to hold that much back?
So it wasn't we decided on holding that percentage back. We are not done with proposals. We are continuing to receive proposals from the campus levels, as well as other departments. We even have a meeting scheduled on Friday. So we're in a quick turnaround time, but we also don't want to just push the money into buckets that don't make sense and that schools don't want. So when we do this, Dr. Washington, Dr. Pena, and Dr. Sines have gone back to the principals and have shared with them, secondary principals, we love them, they are our most vocal group, and they will tell you exactly what they want, and we listened, and we implement it. We have some other proposals, so I know it looks like there's a lot of money on the table, but we want them to have autonomy to tell us, too, what they want. And then hopefully, after this meeting, flood our inboxes, you know, give us feedback, and what are we missing? All of our stakeholders still have opportunity now to say, we need more of this, we like this idea, can you add more? And that's what we want to listen to.
Absolutely. Thank you. And that's such a great answer.
Well, thank you.
Page 22, we talked about freshman success coaches. And I love credit recovery. I've been a big fan of it since Eastern Hills. I had a principal there that was pretty adept at credit recovery, actually wrote a whole program around it, and then she left. Always my luck. What are the ratios for those coaches, and how do we get two if we have a larger freshman class? Or is that a possibility?
Yeah, I appreciate the question. Right now, the strategy here is to look at a team-based approach at each high school that is made up of existing staff. What we wanted is that freshman success coach to manage the process, to keep eyes on, how are we really looking at each student? This was an initial investment. The idea here is that you don't just have one and we stop there, that the freshman success coach turns into a freshman and then a sophomore success coach, and we have one that we build as we continuously move up. We don't want it just to be a single-team approach, that we're looking at them in your freshman year to stay on track. This is about staying on track starting and all the way through your career so that you have every opportunity post-secondary. So I think as we grow, we'll be looking at other opportunities to add more resources to campuses.
I agree. That's cool. The last question I have, page 33. We have 107 schools that we selected.
So for the tutoring, we're focusing on the elementary and the middle school. High school, our high school principals asked for us to give them the autonomy to design their own tutoring. They would like to give, they asked us, you give us the matrix, you tell us how you're going to hold us accountable to show the growth, let us design it with our teachers, give them the stipend pay, because high schoolers are different. You know, they can be at 9:00 at night when they're getting off of a job or coming back from a sporting event, and they know their students. I'm going to call out Rodrigo Durbin. Rodrigo Durbin has a plan. And you know what? We are going to honor his plan, and we're listening. We're listening to John Engel, Oscar Adams. You know, we're sitting in those meetings, and they're like, don't, you know, tell us what our parameters are, let us build it, we'll show you, tell us how you're measuring it, but our teachers know our students best. So that's why you're seeing the focus on the elementary and the middle. We really want to, we want our teachers to be able to focus on during the school day, that tier one, their parents. They're tired, too. They got to go home and be a mom, a dad, a husband, a wife, a daughter, a son. So we want to say, let us do the tutoring with external, and we're going to hold externals accountable. Like, we hope we have many, many people apply to be tutors in our district. But you're going to have to show us you're making student growth if you want to be able to maintain here.
Perfect. Thank you all so much.
Trustee Dari, you're next.
Hooray for autonomy. That's awesome. I love that the high schools have said, let us do this, and you're letting them do this, and I will always cheer for a shout-out for South Hills and Southwest High School. So, thank you. I have several comments and a couple of questions. First of all, on page 10, I am pleased to see that the greatest bulk of this funding is going to support teachers. Thank you for that. Page 12. We're talking about connectivity. Why are we using SFR funds for connectivity when we have the TRE funds that the voters voted to approve last November?
So I'm glad you brought that up, Ms. Dari. The draft that you received last week had connectivity, because we utilized a TA template. We obviously don't need connectivity funds, because we have our TRE. When you dig deeper into it, and you'll see you have a different updated version, that it's really about our blended instruction when we're looking at our early college high schools, we're trying to work on our dual-credit, as well as our honors classes. Like, how can we leverage that? You need different equipment to do that, so we can, for some of our classes, that we may not be able to find a teacher for every campus. Dr. Sines has really been instrumental in that. So when we talked about, it's more about that blended learning, so it's not about connectivity, so we made that change. I appreciate you bringing that to our attention. One of the things that our high school students have been telling us is, we don't like your Chromebooks. Like, get rid of the Chromebooks, we want laptops. So you're going to see, we're going to, we need to give them laptops. And a lot of the courses, especially on-ramps, they have to have laptops. So you're going to see some of the technology is more about the equipment that supports that blended learning, and especially for our dual-credit classes.
Thank you. On page 13, you mentioned the addition of multiple FTEs. Are we already hiring for this?
So we are working, we already have some of the positions posted, and then we're working on the other ones as well. We did want to wait until this evening, when our budget was passed, of course. Then we need to make sure that you're blessing with the plan, it's not a vote, but hopefully you support what we put in there before we start posting too many positions. But we are starting to hire, as well as looking at some of our other positions that have been surplus due to grant funding ending and other needs, and how can we accommodate them?
Right, and are we hiring expediently? Because time is of the essence here. It is June the 22nd, and I communicate with schools all over this area, and they're snatching them up, right and left.
So that's a great point. You know, we are in competition with the whole United States, state of Texas, but then also the metroplex. We really, first of all, thank you for listening to the budget, about the 4%, because that will impact us and become more competitive for hiring as well, for our starting teacher pay. We're looking at our teacher assistant pay as well to increase that. So it's competition. We also want to hire quality and not just quantity. So that's really important. Dr. Washington, Dr. Pena meet with Mr. Spears and his team on Tuesdays on staffing, every Tuesday at 2:00. So I'm not allowed to meet with them during that time, but they're working with those staffing, they're looking at vacancies in all areas, and then we'll be adding these SFR positions to those daily meetings as well. And we do want to give a shout-out to HCM coordinators who are meeting with them. They are really, you know, just the communication, we really appreciate it.
On page 34, I'm thrilled to see the money for the elementary supplies and for money for secondary teachers to purchase supplies for their classroom. I think that's huge. I think that's also a validation of the fact that we hear the teachers when they say, I'm spending a lot of money in my classroom, because we know that they are, and now you're doing something about it. So thank you. The extended learning time was not very well-received as far as these surveys go, for our parents, teachers, or students. Is any extended learning time that is in the plan mandatory for teachers or for students?
For teachers, no. That's why we're looking at the external tutoring plan. However, our high school level, when we're looking at the compensation for the tutoring they're doing, we will be making it a little bit more attractive for our secondary teachers to participate in that. Our students, of course, when you're looking at the secondary, it is about graduation, it's about staying on track. The Saturday schools, we are, actually, Dr. Sorensen is leading up this initiative, and this is going to be something very different. And we don't even want to call it Saturday school, so please just regard that, because it's not Saturday school. This is going to be something totally different, it's going to have a different energy, a different vibe. And honestly, we want this to really be something different and exciting, so then maybe our parents will consider extended day or extended school year in some parts of our city. But first, we've got to show them. When we say different, we've got to be the ones who show them we mean different. The STEM trailers, the fine arts, we want them to experience different things. Ms. Brady and her team are going to be offering adult ed classes, and Ms. Plata is going to be offering parent education classes. I mean, we're going to wrap ourselves all around. We're going to do some fun things. We want them to feel part of their community, their pyramid. It's going to look different, it's going to feel different.
I forgot a question on page 13. Back to the FTEs, we're adding, I'm thrilled to see the fine arts and the performing arts are getting a lot of positions back. What about electives, teaching positions for electives, foreign language? We've had several speakers here in the past that have talked about six preps, and that's difficult. So will they benefit from this extra staff as well?
Definitely. Actually, we did that even before the SFR planning. We went back, and that was one of our first things we did. Once it was released to us, Mr. Moore and his team sat down, and we gave back to the fine arts, as well as the languages. When you look at here at your middle school structure, literacy, and enhanced math classes, this will also impact your electives. So some of these students in that 15th to 25th percentile, they will be required to do that class, because they need it. However, and it's a safe place for them, we want to give them a safe place in a classroom to be able to recover from this learning loss, but they'll still have the ability to participate in two additional electives in middle school. So it's not like we're taking the electives totally from them, but we're just going to be adding that support. This will also help reduce the size of those elective classes, because we will be putting some of those students in the enhanced math and structured literacy.
And just finally, a comment. We all spent time at graduations this past week, and my personal friend and I, we showed up to four graduations, and while I was there, I encountered so many staff that are just so excited to be back in school next year. They are ready to see this school year end, and I think we all are. And I'll just say it out loud, and they are just so excited about learning on August, starting on August 16th. And that energy is contagious, it is refreshing, it is promising, and it makes me excited, too. So I loved getting to visit with staff, with administration, that just repeatedly said, we cannot wait for August 16th. And that's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Trustee Brookins next.
Okay, I'm going to start on page 10, where it says empower the parents, the 35.7. What exactly are you spending that money on to empower our parents?
So you'll see that we increased our FTEs, I believe it was 100 and... So, um, you'll see that we increased our FTEs, or, um, I believe it was 107, 107 FTEs for the full-time family specialists in elementary and middle school. Um, so a lot of that funding is going towards there, um, as well as some supplies and other materials. Also, we have increased, um, our resources, um, for our CARE solists and some other external resources that we can offer to our parents to be able to, um, make referrals to them internally and externally. For that support as well.
Okay, um, on page 12, I also, when I saw connectivity, the first thing that came to my mind was, are we getting towers now? Are we ready to do that?
Oh, we're getting towers.
Yeah, absolutely. In fact, um, uh, Marlon's, um, can, can add. We, we certainly are, we're going to be ready to go. Uh, the game plan is to have those towers, um, constructed and, uh, trailers on the campuses, uh, prior to the end of July. And for the first day of school, we will be, we will be, um, in, in, uh, in households, uh, shooting for 4,000 of our first phase, um, students. We know that the, the computer chip, um, issue, um, could, could, could cause us to, to, um, take a, a different strategy and work with one of our, um, cable providers, but, uh, we are confident we're going to get there.
Awesome. Okay, and let me see. I'm excited to hear, uh, on page 13 about the visual arts, the visual and performing arts. To hear that come back strong, uh, that's exciting news for me as well. Um, let me see. How, how do our plans, and I, and I love the, the way that all of our plans sound. It sounds like y'all did a really good job of bringing all of these things together. How do our plans compare to other ISDs that have received the funding, especially those that are similar in size to us?
So yesterday, um, we were able to collaborate with the, um, eight other large urban districts. And we had to present our plans to each other. Um, we were allowed to ask questions, dig deeper, um, steal some ideas. One of the plans that is not on here because Dr. Washington, um, and actually Ms. Breed's team, they're working on how can we decrease, uh, suspensions? Keeping our kids in school, especially when we're looking at our middle school and high school. So you're going to see a plan coming forward that will be, um, addressing that. Um, we already had that in our, in our heads. We just need to, um, really just put the logistics and some details to it. But then yesterday we had a district share. Um, we loved it. They called it the reset room. So, you know, we want to keep our kids on campus.
Right.
They don't need to be, uh, you know, we don't need to go home. They spend enough time at home. Like, I'm a parent. Yeah, like, you need to go back to school, right? So keep them in school, but they're going to need a reset. But it's not only our students. Um, our teachers are going to have to adjust coming back too, with all of our students. But how can we just say, hey, you need some reset time, but then have trained staff on those SEL supports? Where they're just not going in and they're sitting. Like, it needs to look different. It needs to feel different. How do you say, okay, let's just, let's calm down. How can we get you back? Or, you know, you're not going home. Some of our kids are going to want to go home. They're going to challenge us. But we need to keep them back on our campuses. So that was just one example, but it was fantastic, um, trustee Brookins, just to spend time. Um, they brought, you know, teams with them as well and, and really to share those ideas. I feel like we're very aligned. Um, you know, one of the things that we did not share on here is, uh, we have about 35, uh, elementary campuses that will be participating in a new reading called Amplify from the commissioner TA that's being funded. Also, teachers will be compensated to be a part of this, um, pilot. Super excited about that. Um, also, we've shared with you before, we're looking at a new, um, math curriculum. And that was something brought up too. So everyone's struggling in those areas.
Yeah.
So, but it, it was a great way to, for us to have our own PLC in collaboration time with those districts.
I, I'm excited to hear about that because I, I feel like we don't need to reinvent the wheel, but to at least look at the other ISDs that are doing really well that are our size. And so that's exciting to hear that y'all were able to work with them. I also like the idea about the, the credit recovery and the frequency of the progress assessments. I think that's going to, that's going to change a lot because you're, you're able to see the progress a lot sooner than later.
Yes, and, and intervene immediately.
Exactly.
And part of the credit recovery teams is for the teachers to be able to work with other teachers, other core teachers to provide that support for, uh, academic recovery, to provide tutorials, to be able to communicate with parents, the, the systems we have in place to support students. So we are really excited about that. As a matter of fact, I think other districts stole some of our ideas about freshman teams and credit recovery.
That's okay. We'll take that.
We stole there, so.
Um, I have a, I guess a question about the, the tutoring partners. So is that, is that funding that we have to pay for them to, to work with us? And also, um, is there going to be some kind of training for them to make sure that we're all on the same page?
Yeah, so, um, Dr. Sorensen and Mr. Moore are working on the RFP. We about have that finalized. Um, with that, they're going to have to come and, uh, present to us, show us how their program is aligned. What kind of matrix they're going to be able to provide for us and our students? Um, are they going to be able to, um, work with all of our students? Um, you know, we, we need tutors in English and in Spanish. You know, we want it outside the school day. There's lots of people want to come help us pull our kids out of tier one instruction. But we know that's not what's best for them because we have high-quality teachers. They, we need to let them do their job and they need to be around our schedule and come in after school, work with our Fort Worth after-school programming. Um, it's not going to be one vendor, one partner. We need multiple to be able to service. And each school's different. Our principals are going to be able to, we're going to say, here's a list of eight to 10. Which one, here's what their criteria, here's their characteristics, what works best for your campus? And let them interview. We're in the power seat. So let's, you know, let's pick who is needed and who can work for us and with us, um, to meet the needs that we say we need for our kids.
I'm, I'm just excited to hear about this plan. And I think that if everything goes as well as it's presented to, to us today, that, um, there's, there's no way that we can't have, you know, a lot of progress. And so I'm excited to, to hear all of that and to see all your plans. Um, I, I just hope that, um, a lot of the things that we put in place tonight, that we're able to sustain them even after the three years. Because I think this, a lot of this is going to really help our students and, and, you know, it's very, very much needed. And so I just hope that we can continue even after the three-year is over.
You know, when we think about attendance, um, and that we could dig deeper in our plan for attendance. Attendance is money. Re-engagement and getting our students back.
Right.
So part of that sustainability plan is really focusing on this, on the attendance. Keep them in school from out-of-school suspensions, getting them back, being proactive about attendance. Why are you out? What resources do you need? Don't wait till they're out five days. Like, if they're not here, let's find out why. What do they need? Um, so that's one of our sustainability plans. It's just getting our students back. Also, um, we want new students. We want our stakeholders to want to come back. They see the great things happening here in Fort Worth ISD.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have trustee Luebanos.
Thank you, President Ramos. Uh, thank you for this report. Exciting to see the upcoming changes. So on page 10, uh, when you said, uh, create more time for learning, does that include the after-school tutoring or, or more, more time in the classroom?
It's the after-school tutoring as well as the secondary, um, probably, you know, pilot. When, like, um, I'm going to use Durbin again. He's probably going to text me a little bit. Stop saying my name. But he probably won't actually. But, um, you know, he likes it. Uh, you know, he's, he's the perfect example. He's like, I have teachers who want to do it on a Sunday because that's what works for them. That's what works for their students. So it'll be after-school. It's going to be weekends. It's going to be those Saturday additional days. And it's probably going to be times that we haven't identified yet, but then including the Fort Worth after-school programming.
So on page 21, 22, we are going to share a report on, on the students every six months. How often are we going to hear back from you guys on the progress on every six months too?
Um, we will have it scheduled, kind of like we do a board monitoring calendar for our LSG reports and our goals. We're going to make sure we do that. Um, we also would like to tie in some of this to those monthly meetings and share bits and pieces. I think it's, uh, and it may not be the data sets, full data sets, but I think it's important for you to see how are some of these initiatives working or not working? What have we seen, the successes? So, um, we'll be tying those bits and pieces into each of our board meetings under our LSG because these do impact our board goals.
Thank you. And, and you mentioned this before, attendance. Do we have someone that is in charge of attendance overall, like a chief of attendance? Because attendance is money. And if, and if we want to continue with this for the next, forever, we need our revenue. Uh, it's a lot of money that we need to somehow get. Maybe collaboration with our partners, with our nonprofits to help us get there. But I don't know if we have a, somebody in charge of attendance.
Dr. Washington.
Yeah, I was going to say, that was, um, Ms. Moore and I mentioned that we have been meeting with a focus group of principals. And that was one of the things that they asked for. So we've already identified and created a position, uh, for someone that will be a central level person to monitor attendance, but also monitor all the criteria and the early warning systems. And they will connect with those credit recovery teams to ensure that we're not in, not only monitoring at the campus, but at the district level. We will receive those reports from this, this staff, but they will also work in conjunction with, um, Dr. Penya, share the dashboard. So they will work with our elementary and middle school, the staff that will be added, the engagement staff that will be added for elementary and middle. So we'll have one person that's going to coordinate that effort. But we'll also see this, a district-wide systemic process. So that we're able to monitor attendance, credit recovery, um, grades, all of those things.
So that will be coming up next, next full year?
And it is cost-efficient. We do not have to ask for another position. We've already had it.
Yeah, we were able to reallocate, uh, another position to create that attendance position. Um, Ms. Breed, Dr. Washington, Dr. Penya have been working with Ms. Breed and her team. Our stay-in-school specialists, um, they're spread really thin. They work within a pyramid. Um, by adding the additional resources to elementary, middle, the stay-in-school specialists will be able to concentrate on the high school and really, um, work on our high school, um, re-engagement of our students as well. So, um, it's also like those FTEs, we didn't leave out high school because now our stay-in-school specialists will be able to really focus on the high school and not happen to worry to go check on their middle, go check on their, their elementary.
Thank you. Next, we have trustee Evans.
Thank you all for this report. Um, the, my first question is about the Saturday learning quest. Will, um, it sounds really great. It really does. 14 days of learning. But I, I understand that attendance on a sixth day of school might, could drop off. Would this or could this open us up to truancy issues?
Um, it would not be counted against a student. Um, we really are going to work, that's why we're doing more of a, a whole family engagement part by showing the parents, like, we have opportunities for you to come as well. Uh, we were very strategic about identifying the Saturdays already, um, to make sure they were not near holidays that we know parents tend to say, like, hey, we're going to leave early. We're going to, um, we have stuff going on the weekend. And also the hours, um, we're trying to finish around, I believe it's 2:30, 2:20. Um, so, you know, parents and students can still have some of their Saturday left as well as some of their Sunday. We looked at where our calendar fit for flex days. Because we also, what's important here is which teachers we capture. We're not opening it up to just teachers because we want the best. It could be instructional coaches. It could be content coaches. It could be counselors because they have teaching certifications, um, librarians. So we want the best on those Saturdays. So we wanted to make sure we did not take away from them as well as like doing it on a Saturday when they just had a flex day that they earned off on a Friday. Um, because our teachers, of course, that's why they want to earn that flex days for a three-day weekend. They weren't going to come in and commit to that Saturday.
Okay, thank you. Um, my next question is, I remember in a previous presentation, some of the research that was cited for COVID recovery strategy included looping. Is there currently a plan in place for looping, at least in the tier four campuses? And is any of this ESER money that we're talking about, um, going to be set aside for stipend for these teachers that commit to loop and be with a class for two years?
I think you just put a new proposal on our table. Good thing we have money for that. We, we currently do not have a, a looping plan. Um, but, you know, what we love about this is that we have, um, really innovative principals who are ready to try that looping. Who are we with? We were just with someone, oh, we were at the South Hills, um, honorary. It was like a teacher of the year luncheon. And, um, you know, we were sitting there and one of the teachers spoke, our teacher of the year for that campus spoke on looping. And how excited. So, um, I think you've just given us, like, we're going to go out and challenge principals who want to loop. And we can offer, we can offer some, a stipend for teachers who, who say, I'm going to loop with my students and I'm going to show those gains, so.
Trustee Evans, we'll, we'll be getting back with you pretty quickly, um, on, on what we will, will look into with looping opportunity.
Thank you all.
Okay, next we have trustee Phillips.
Uh, thank you, President Ramos. I guess first, so first of all, to trustee Brookins' court question, I loved your question about, you know, about, um, how are we looking as far as with other districts comparison and everything? So it made me real happy when Jerry and Sharice started smiling real big. I'm like, okay. That means we winning. That's what I'm talking about, yeah.
So it, it was really fun, um, on Monday to hear what everyone else was presenting and say, our plan's better than that.
Come on now.
But then we heard some other opportunities that we said, wow, we didn't think about that. Let's, let's add to that. So it was a really great opportunity.
So we beat them and we stole.
There you go. You got it.
That is what I'm talking about. I love all of that. I'm here for it. Um, y'all, this is it. This is it. This is, this is listening. Y'all listen very well, um, to across the gambit educators, community, board, students. Y'all listen to man. And, and, I mean, this is just so profoundly well-done. I'm super proud of all y'all. Y'all are good. Y'all dope. Good job. This, um, if we execute this correctly, right? This is, this is the revolutionary way that we can move forward. This is what leads to student outcomes because it's real tangible money going to direct problem-solving. These freshman coaches, more staff, instruction time, like, I mean, it's just cross-the-board beauty. And, and particularly, um, you know, you know, I stated before how my heart goes out when I hear teachers have to talk about coming out of pocket for school supplies and decorating their classrooms or... And I know how daunting of a task if you, if you're a parent, grandparent, a guardian of some kind and you get that $100, $150, $200, uh, you know, list in front of you of class supplies that your young person is going to need on top of school clothes or uniforms. And so to be able to come in and say, just let your young person show up. Y'all, I'm telling you, like, um, so understanding, coming in this, coming into this day with a mindset of understanding what we were about to embark. Understanding what we were about to hear and everything like that. It was really daunting. This uplifted my spirits in ways that I cannot, you know, that it seems like we're not tone deaf. We're getting it. Like, you know what I mean? Like, these are sustainable things that when parents and community members are saying, ah, well, I don't want to send my kid to Fort Worth ISD. Yeah, you do. Because if we doing it like this, this is what puts us on top of the game. Just super excited and proud of, uh, the way that this whole thing is coming together. We execute this, y'all. We changing the game. Serious. Uh, Jerry, like you chubbed a bit, man.
Trustee, I'm sorry, but
No, come on, please.
You said something that, uh, you know, hits at the heart of this whole plan.
Yeah.
It's execution. Uh, it's implementation. That's really what we have to say, stay focused on. And I hope you all see, um, every plan that, not just the ones that you saw up here, but every plan we're moving forward has a monitoring and evaluation measure that we're holding ourselves accountable to because this is really what can make a difference for the students of Fort Worth ISD. This is what we know our kids need to support them coming back into in-person instruction, recovering from whatever has happened over these last 16, 18 months to our students. Our focus is not only academically, socially, emotionally, just the whole student, the whole schooling experience. How do we support our students to get back into our schools and make the gains we know our students need to make? And where our stu-, to get our students where we want them to be?
Well, I love it. You know, it, of course, there's always room for improvement. As shown by trustee Evans, what she said a minute ago, anybody even not spending every dime on it right then. It was like, oh, you know what? We actually can be able to do that if we come up with a good idea or something. It was phenomenal. And then even to the point of, um, we talked about those Chromebooks. I hate them Chromebooks too, right? But I'm proud that we, uh, we, we offer devices to every kid in our district, right? So at least we have something. But the fact that now we'll be able to improve upon that technology too. It just, I mean, it really just knocked it out.
And, and none, and none of those resources go to waste because we still have Chromebooks for our elementary and middle school students. That helps us with the refresh cycle there and it gives us the additional That helps us with the refresh cycle there and it gives us the additional support when students get to high school so that we really have a resource that can support the courses that they're enrolled in. So it still goes to very good use.
Absolutely, and the Chromebook for elementary students makes all the sense in the world. They work perfectly. A high school student, they definitely need, you know, a little bit more when it comes to what they work process and some of everything else they're doing. But, yeah, thank you all. This really uplifted in my spirit. I think we're in a perfect direction. Let's execute this because it changes the game.
I do wanna recognize that it really has been, like, all the departments really coming together. You know, we all can't fit up at this table. And then there's so many people that we work with and collaborate with that came up. Everyone went back and worked with their teams and came up with proposals. And like I said, we're still, you know, going through them. We're very, you have to have a valuation measure. And if you can't, you know, come before us and say how you're gonna evaluate it, then it's not something we need to do. But I just have to let everyone know, there's so many more people who just have this passion that we're just able to share with you this evening and are working hard. We want our kids back and we want them to be successful.
Well, and it shows. And that's why I even started by saying the list. Because you can even see in a departmental as it goes along that things that are being said along the way, you can tell that they're coming to the surface now and being addressed in proposals such as this. So, you know, it shows exactly what you're saying. About screaming like he's about to say something.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to kind of reiterate and appreciate your comments, Trustee Phillips. I mean, this really is a once, once-in-a-generation, maybe once-in-a-lifetime opportunity where we are resetting as a result of global pandemic and half of our students staying home for almost the entire year. And to be, have the opportunity for $260, a million dollars coming to us that we can be thoughtful about, strategic about, invest in, and as the team has done, hold back a small portion of that for when we need to monitor and adjust. I think we're in a great, great position. And Jerry makes a good point about the magic is in the implementation. We have to stay on top of this and make sure it's executed, implemented correctly. Wonderful.
Okay, thank you. Next, Trustee Martinez.
Well, I wanna say first that I'm very optimistic as well about this plan and just really excited about some of the things that are included in it. But first, I do have a question about, and I know, I think, Trustee Jackson touched on just what the goal was for student responses and also for parent responses. I'm interested in who actually responded as far as a breakdown of students, gender, race, what schools. And so to me, just kind of having that background information of who responded, whose voice did we... I love the idea of elevating the student voice. I just wanna know which students they were. And so I'd like that information. And then, you know, it seems like overwhelmingly the summer learning opportunities and obviously the extra tutoring and Saturday, Saturday school, or we're not calling it Saturday school, but whatever it'll be called, it will require, you know, some communication. Well, the whole plan will require communication to the public, just regaining that confidence and getting the children back in school. So one of my questions, and maybe it's not included in this plan with the ESTER funds, but just as far as communications, I feel like even with, like, we're gonna need advertising, recruitment, and a lot of communications to the families. And so kind of wanted to know if that is factored into the plan or that, you know, comes out of separate budget. So I just feel like we're gonna need a lot of communications to the families about the plan in general, but then also just promoting and really selling some of these opportunities. I do just wanna echo, I think, Trustee Brookin's mentioned, or just kind of touched on the sustainability. Because I was really excited to see the addition of some of those art and art programs coming back in art, music. But, you know, I'd hate to get those going and then in three years have to discontinue them, so.
Trustee Martinez, I appreciate that. I wanted to call out the strategy that we implemented as we put these positions back was not just to put them back into a campus, but to say, as we've added additional FTEs, we're looking at a pyramid-wide approach. And the teachers are going back and building their program starting at the elementary level so that in three years, the student enrollment is there to sustain the position, so we don't have to go through this anymore. So we're already tasking our fine arts team to say, look at this differently. And how do we not just look at, you gave me a teacher back, but you gave me a teacher back to teach our kids, but also to grow our program and we're gonna start that at the elementary level? And we're really gonna build these programs up within each of our pyramids.
Great, great, that's great. Yeah, and also just wanted to touch on the family engagement. I love that we're adding the full-time family engagement specialists. But I know a lot of campuses currently struggle to fill these positions. Again, you know, I just wanna reiterate, going back to how important it is for the recruitment and advertising for these positions because, you know, I know that there are so many campuses right now that struggle to fill those. And that's such a valuable position. Have a question about, on page number 34, adding the six special education instructional specialists. How many do we currently have? And then how does the six additional, how does that affect each campus?
Yeah, currently we have four and all of those positions are not filled right now. So we have an opportunity to increase the number. We'll assign those specialists to the regional approach. So there will be certain ones assigned to each region based on the need, based on the students that are enrolled in each one of the regions. So there won't be any direct campus impact. It'll be an additional support that goes out to the campus and provides additional expertise in support of the campus-based teachers.
Okay. And then just one question that I had just for clarification because of some earlier public comments. Can you tell me a little bit more or just elaborate on the restorative practices? And what exactly that means and what... Could you elaborate on that?
Sure. Ms. Bree? Trustee Martinez, when we talk about restorative practices, it really is just, it says restore. We're restoring the relationship with the teacher or whatever. We're working on restoring that, right what has been wronged in the classroom. And usually it's a classroom, but we do that through circles, through connections, number of things about building the relationships. So that's when we talk about restorative practice. I don't know about the misunderstanding that was mentioned earlier tonight. It kind of caught me by surprise as well.
Yeah, okay, so I just wanted to clarify that for the public that may have been listening at that comment. Thank you for that. And then lastly, could you repeat the universities that are, that will be involved on page 35 with strengthening our teacher pipeline?
So for the first point with the teacher residency program, and let me elaborate, actually, I missed a couple of points. This is, it's a bit different. Those resident teachers are gonna be with us all year long. Unlike a student teacher that comes in a semester or by semester, they'll get off part-time on Wednesdays to go to school. And not only that, they're gonna get paid as teaching assistants. So anywhere between $19,000 to $21,000. But with that program, that's Tarleton State. And then with our Kinder Teaching Assistant Program, we're targeting programs like TCU, UTA, UNT, all of our schools around here because we're gonna need their support.
Texas Wesleyan?
Texas Wesleyan, yes, ma'am. Sorry about that, I missed that one.
Just to expand on that, that's a process that we're just now beginning, reaching out to those universities and pitching our idea about how can we bring your pre-service teachers in, give them a flexible schedule. The idea here is it aligns in the classrooms of our earliest learners during that time when we may be working in individualized instruction. That differentiation piece where you know you need to meet the individual needs of students, how can we have extra bodies in the classroom to help the teacher manage the process, but also have someone that's making a direct connection with our earliest learners and focused on their specific needs? All local universities will be reached out to.
Great, yeah. And I just wanted to also reiterate how excited I am that there will be teacher support and also supplies worked into the plan. So really like that. Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, last speaker comment is Dr. Ryan.
Well, thank you for a really good plan. I think it's comprehensive and it's gonna cover a lot of areas. In this plan, there's over 460 new spots, new teachers are coming in. And we need to keep those teachers. One of the problems I've seen when I've gone out and worked in other school districts that have teachers that came from Fort Worth ISD, they were great teachers for us. They left because there wasn't the support or we had to cut somewhere and so they ended up in another place. This plan goes for three years, but we've gotta try to keep these people. If we want the very best folks coming in to work for us, they need to know they're gonna have a career here. And so it's gonna be, I mean, and looking at this, it's gonna take 9,000 to 12,000 additional students to cover those 160-plus FTEs. So we've gotta, you know, how are we gonna work that out? So there needs to be a plan that we can sell to all these new folks we're gonna get in. This is what we're gonna do because we wanna keep you. And so I think we really need to look at that because I really don't wanna sit there after three years and go, well, we've gotta make these cuts and all of a sudden we've got, we're losing some of the best people we got coming in. I think the second part is there can be unintended consequences in some of the stuff we do. I know we've got the extra teachers for math and reading in sixth and seventh grade. But in a seven-period day, you start cutting stuff out that they could take in electives and those are things that a lot of times keep them in school. We know that they come for band, they come for athletics, they come for choir, they come for orchestra. And if you've got six or seven periods blocked out and they've gotta get health in or something else, then they can't take what they want that way. So there are gonna be some consequences that, now that we're putting some of these teachers back in, they might not be able to build their program because we're taking a number of their students out to help them in areas they've gotta be supported in, in math and reading. We know that's gotta happen. So somewhere in there, we're gonna have to look at how we balance that out to make sure they can also be in classes they want to be in, which one keeps them there, helps them attend every day. I know when I looked at it, working for Fort Worth ISD, the highest attendance we had from any group of students were our orchestra kids. Of course, they were higher than anything and just about our grades and everything else anyway. So we wanna keep them and keep them in areas that entice them to wanna be in school.
Dr. Ryan, I appreciate your comments there. I agree with you as well. I think the strategy, when you talk about our enhanced reading and structured literacy classes, the strategy is to work ourself out of that business. Strategy is to really implement our Tier One, our initial instructional program. What do we really expect teachers to be teaching in the classroom? Are instructional framework well with the interventions we have in place at elementary? So we have sixth and seventh grade students that don't need to be in that additional class. We have students that are in that boat now, especially coming back from COVID, so we need to have that in place. We've gotta be strategic about the students we identify. That's why we looked at that 15 to 25th percentile and say, we really can have impact on these students, giving them a little additional time. And keeping that, like you said, the seven-period day, something has to come out, but still allowing them at least the two elective opportunities in their schedule. Hopefully, as we move forward, we get those students back into those elective options because I agree with you, those are the courses that kids stay enrolled in school. Those are the courses that kids come to school to engage in. So we're on the same page there.
Just looking at the young lady that was, we saw it on our side, that was getting ready to go to one of 25 kids that get taken from all over the country and auto, billing specialty autos and stuff. And you're going, man, I want them to have stuff like that. So it's not just a few of the classes, but it's everything. And I want, so especially with athletics, how do we make that entice them so they'll be in there? I mean, we had a number of kids that we recognized last time that were incredible athletes. We can do better, but we've gotta keep them in our district.
Okay, thank you. That looks like those are all the questions or the comments from the board. Thank you, staff and team. We will now move on, excuse me, to number nine, discussion of consent agenda items. We're gonna stay out here to be efficient. My last evening as board president, so I'm gonna make that call tonight, my friends. As board president, I'm making the following statement in accordance with Board Policy BBFA Local. This is a reminder to all board members of the legal conflict of interest requirements and disclosure requirements you may have for matters under consideration on the agenda for this meeting. If required by law, board members shall recuse themselves from all discussion and shall abstain from voting on any matter pertaining to such a disclosure. Are there any questions, comments concerning agenda item? We have Trustee Dar.
No questions? Sorry, my microphone's a bit on re... No questions, but I do need to move item B29 to the action items because the vendor is my employer.
Okay, duly noted, thank you. Will you turn your mic on, please? Legal counsel, repeat that.
Sorry about that. Trustee Dar, if you'd like, you could just note on the record that you're gonna abstain on that item and it could still be approved with the entire consent agenda.
And I can still vote on the entire consent agenda?
Except for that item. Just note that you're abstaining on that specific item.
Okay, then I duly noted, I am abstaining on that specific item, B29.
Okay.
Because the vendor is my employer.
Thank you, legal counsel, and thank you, Trustee Dar, for noting that for us. Looks like no other questions or comments on consent agenda. The time is 9:33 PM. The date is Tuesday, June 22, 2021. We will now recess and reconvene for executive session as authorized by Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code under Sections 551.071, 072, 074, and 076. Okay, looks like we've got everyone, so we're going to get going. In accordance with the open meetings law, the board opened a meeting at 5:30 PM with a quorum present, recessed and reconvened open session, adjourned regular session, convened executive session, and then adjourned executive session is now reconvened open session at 9:57 PM with a quorum present. We will move on to accepting consent agenda items with the exception of item... Legal counsel, help me, what was that item again? B-20? 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 B29, where trustee Dar has noted that she will be abstaining from that item, that we will be voting on that with that exception. Do I have a motion accepting consent agenda items? We have a motion by trustee Jackson, we have a second by trustee Levanos. Any discussion? Looks like no discussion, please move to vote. Motion passes nine, four, and zero against, again noting that abstention. So we will go to number 15B, which is senior personnel, grants and development. Dr. Scribner?
Thank you very much, President Ramos. Trustees, tonight we're very excited to announce our new senior officer for grants and development. I'd like to turn it over to our deputy superintendent, Karen Molinar, who will make that announcement.
Thank you, Dr. Scribner. So this evening, very excited to present to you Mirjic Crespo, which she is not a new face to our district, has been instrumental not only for the past 17 years as a Fort Worth ISD employee, but 10 years in a leadership role. As you, tonight when we were doing our ESSR planning, Ms. Crespo's been there every step with us, in the meetings, for hours and hours, telling us, "No, you can do it." "Yes, you can't do it," and vice versa. But we're just really happy and just want to thank you as well, Ms. Crespo, when we were going through COVID and when that position was vacant, you stepped up and you really provided support to us as a district. So very excited and honored that you'll be our new senior officer, grants and development. Pending board approval. Ms. Crespo, did you... pending board approval, but you can still introduce. Did you bring anyone with you this evening?
That's my... Boarding... Thank you. We appreciate you.
Great, thank you. No pressure, board. We'll look to... We have a motion by trustee Jackson, we have a second by Dr. Ryan. Any discussion on this item? You think I'd know better after four years, right? Looks like no discussion, we'll move to vote. Motion passes nine, four, and zero against. Congratulations. Let me get to my items. Here we go, 16A. Do we have 16A? No, 16A, so we're moving on to 16B. Discussion in action to approve the 2021-2022 budget for the Leadership Academy Network, Texas Wesleyan Management Team. Looking to see if we have a motion. We have a motion by trustee Evans, we have a second by trustee Jackson. Looks like we have discussion. Trustee Brookins.
I will have to abstain from this. I start teaching at Texas Wesleyan tomorrow.
All right, congratulations. Looks like no other discussion, so we'll move to vote. We have eight, four, and one person abstaining. Motion passes. Moving on to 16C, which is discussion in action to approve the 2021-2022 budget for the Leadership Academy at J. Martin Jack Hay Middle School. Looking for a motion. We have a motion by trustee Evans, we have a second by trustee Brookins. Any discussion? Looks like no discussion on this item, we will move to vote. Motion passes nine, four, and zero against. Thank you. We are on to 16D, discussion in action to approve salary increases for the 2021-2022 school year. Have a motion. Motion by trustee Dar, we have a second by Dr. Ryan. Any discussion here? Trustee Dar.
I support paying teachers the most that we can pay them. I know there are limits, but they're doing the heavy lifting and they deserve to be paid the maximum amount that we can pay them.
Thank you, trustee Dar. Next, we have a comment by trustee Levanos.
Thank you, President Ramos. I will abstain on this one, as my wife is an employee of the district.
Okay, thank you. Looks like no more discussion, so we'll move to vote. Motion passes eight, four, and one person abstaining. Onto 16E, discussion in action for election of board officers. Gonna turn this over to Dr. Scribner, so that he can oversee this process for us.
Thank you, President Ramos. This item is discussion in action for election of Board of Education Officers. Do we have a motion? We have a motion from Daphne Brookins, trustee Brookins.
Motion for the office of the presidency. Toby Jackson.
Okay, there's a motion for Toby Jackson to be nominated as a president of the board and seconded by trustee Michael Ryan. Move to vote. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry. Do we want...
Yeah, let's go back. Different comments.
Are there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, move to vote.
We're waiting on the screen.
Sorry. We have a motion by trustee Brookins, seconded by trustee Ryan, for Toby Jackson to serve as president, and is there any discussion? And I think, are we still waiting for the screen?
If the screen doesn't go, I'll have some discussion. I'm sorry? We were trying to do discussion.
Are there?
Okay.
Then by a show of hands, is there anyone who would like to engage in discussion on the board?
I would. Yeah, I am... I'm looking forward to however we decide, you know, who our board president is, and I'm hoping that we as a board, based on the conversation we had at the last board meeting right after the workshop, that we look to lead not only a state but in the country on how we do this process. Many, many of times, people have cited downtown leadership, west side leadership, that have allegedly determined the future of how this board operates, and so I'm gonna cite downtown leadership, and particularly Mr. Pete Garin with the Sid Richardson Foundation, who told me years ago, when I... told me before I took the presidency this, the second time, he said, you know, "It'd be ideal if you all could figure out how to do this based on what your vision is, what you, what you're gonna do as president." And I tried to model that. I tried to also implement a process for us to do this, and it looks like, you know, time just slipped away from us. A pandemic came and we couldn't get that policy situated, but I loved the discussion that we had at the last workshop, and this is my I statement to model the agreements that we have, is I am really hopeful that we can lead that, and that we can get to a point where, when we select our board president, that we articulate, what is the vision, what are we, what am I about, what am I gonna do, what am I not gonna be willing to do? And we have expectations that we laid out last week. I love that dialogue. I hope that that's what keeps coming across, that this board is willing to do is to continue to have those tough discussions. And now that we're coming out of, knocking on wood, a pandemic, that we can get to that point, because there's very little research on the importance of board presidents, and I'm gonna speak my truth, that four out of my eight years, and I lost my hair and I got a lot of gray, I always say that, but it's true. The stress that comes with the seat, the time that it takes to do the work, the hits that we take from every, every direction, the mediating that used to have to take place, the modeling of integrity, is not an easy task. And so I look forward to gathering research and writing about that in the future, but don't let, don't... My colleagues, and to my two newest colleagues on the board, leadership ain't easy, and a brave, a wise person once told me that great leaders make leadership look easy to where everybody thinks they can do it. And I have learned from amazing human beings that have taught me, I've leaned on many. My biggest mentor in leadership, Father Stephen Hostel passed this last year. I don't have him anymore, to lean on him, on what that meant, but on like nights till like tonight, you know, the, when we went through the transgender deal and the confusion that came with that, I was able to lean on Father Hostel, and I went to the church and I said, "Father, what do I do?" Like, I'm new, this is like my first major board meeting, we got the public upset, we got folks coming in every direction, and Father Hostel's response was simple. He said, "Your job is to love, my son. That's it. You got the politics, you got the politricks, but your job is to love." And so I say that, that if none of my other colleagues are gonna speak on this one, that's my I statement, that's my wish. These are my final four years, I have not been silent about that, but I've also learned that I can't leave things in the way that I found them. And the way I found them, I'm gonna make a lot of people uncomfortable, and I'm okay with that. I found this, I found this room in a mess. It was racially divided, it was community divided, and I've watched this board work together to get to a new place, a high level of respect, a dialogue in a way where we can agree to disagree. We can leave things in the boardroom and we can still be human beings to one another when we walk out of here. I didn't do that, I'm not saying I'm taking credit, I'm just saying what I walked into is not what we have right now, so I'm really hopeful. So that's my truth. Thank you for entertaining my thoughts, colleagues.
Thank you, President Ramos. Is there any other discussion? A hearing none? We can continue to vote. The motion passes nine, four, and zero against President Toby Jackson.
All right. Congratulations, President Jackson. Looking forward to your leadership at the next, the next meeting for us. Any comments on your end?
Just, just a few, sir. First, I want to say, President Ramos, you've done a great job. You've had 66% of the last six years, and I don't see any gray, but I got a little... I just want to say it's an honor to serve as a, as a Fort Worth ISD trustee. It's the greatest honor of my life, and it's a privilege to be elected by your peer trustees to serve as president, and I want to say thank you to each of you. Throughout this next term, I pledge to you that I will be steadfastly focused on one goal, and I know this board will be, improving academic performance across all 209 square miles of this district. And in pursuit of that goal, our board and our superintendent have to be unwaveringly in their demonstration of administrative and board accountability to our community, and we have to promote the positives. I know, Barbara, you do a great job, you promote a lot of positives, but, but we have to promote our positives and we also have to promote where we need to improve, and we need to unite our community, and I pledge to work hard to do that. And one thing that we've talked about that I'm gonna ask for everybody's help on, but especially yours, Sisinto, ex-policy or local policy. As we've discussed many times, let's get that policy written where it serves the highest acuity of need kids, and it also addresses equitable educational opportunities for our stakeholders, all races, ethnicities, genders, and especially special needs. And I think our end result is gonna be exactly what we all want, sustainable outcomes and a unified city that supports all of our kids. So thank you, and thank you for letting me talk a little bit.
You got it.
Thank you, President Jackson. Our next order of business is a motion for Board of Education Officers. Is there a motion? Trustee Evans?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for vice president, and point of clarification, we have two vice president roles. We will be presenting a policy in the near future to grandfather out or phase out the second vice president, or one of the vice president roles. So for the vice president role that we are not going to phase out, I nominate Q. Phillips.
Is there a second? Trustee Martinez, second? Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, please move to voting. The motion passes, eight voting yes and one voting no. So we then also have a second vice president position and a secretary position left. Is that correct? So is there a motion? Trustee Jackson?
I move that second vice president be trustee Daphne Brookins.
Motion that trustee Brookins be second vice president by trustee Jackson, seconded by trustee Ryan. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, please move to voting. Motion passes, nine voting yes, zero voting no, unanimous. And finally, the last officer for the Board of Education is the secretary. Do we have a motion for the secretary? Move by Sisinto Ramos, trustee Ramos?
I make a motion that secretary be trustee CJ Evans.
Motion by trustee Ramos that trustee Evans serve as secretary, seconded by trustee Phillips. Any discussion? Hearing none? We can move to vote? Motion passes, nine voting yes, zero voting no. Congratulations to all.
Congratulations, officers. Final part is comments by board members or superintendents on current district activities or announcements. Any comments from the board or superintendent? Trustee Dar.
Thank you, President Ramos. Thank you, former President Ramos. Just a couple of quick comments. One is congratulations to our recent graduates. Like I said, it is, it is a joy, it is an absolute joy, and it's one of my greatest joys to celebrate student success. And to see the faces of kids as they cross that stage and their accomplishments is truly, truly worth celebrating, and, and it is, it is, it takes a team effort, including my son that graduated as well, and that was a great blessing to get to share that with him. I'd also like to, my phone keeps pinging with tweets because every teacher in Fort Worth ISD is expected to get 30 hours of flex time, and we have an abundance of teachers who have gone way beyond that 30 hours. 64 hours, 72 hours, 98 hours, some teachers have put in over 100 hours of time, of their time, doing professional development, because they know that lifelong learners create lifelong learners, and that's what we want, and as educators, is lifelong learners. And so I commend all the teachers that have put in all those extra hours, that's time away from their family and their children and what they may want to be doing that they're spending doing professional development to make themselves better educators, so I appreciate that. And also, just a moment of personal privilege, it is not easy to be married to or the children of a board member, and this has been an exceptionally difficult year, but even in a normal year, it's a lot of time that I spend away from home, it's a lot of time that my husband is fixing food and doing laundry, and my children are... I miss baseball games and soccer games, and I believe very strongly in the work that we do in Fort Worth ISD. I believe very strongly in my, my role on this board, and I agree with Toby, it is a great honor to do this, but I, I would like to thank my family for supporting me and for putting up with a mother who's just a little bit crazy and a whole lot passionate about public education. So thank you for that moment of personal privilege.
Trustee Brookins.
First, I want to say that the vote for Q. for first vice president should be unanimous. My screen's messed up or something, so it should have been yes. And then... And then, I just want to say congratulations to all of our students who graduated. It was so refreshing to go to the graduation and just see and hear their speeches, and so many of them had patience out there in that heat. I didn't, I didn't have patience, I was fussing the whole time, but they had, they didn't care, they were so excited that it was over. And I was very proud of the two that I attended, Odie Wyatt with 354 kids, that is just amazing for all of them to come back. So I just wanted to say congratulations to all of our graduating seniors, and I look forward to attending indoor graduations next year.
All right, my friends, is Dr. Scribner anything? All right. I thought we'd make it by 10, but we just missed it, so, my friends, the time is 10:19. We are now adjourned, everyone be safe.